Welcome, everyone, to the regular meeting of the Cohasset School Committee on June 22, 2022. We are in person in the Cohasset Learning Commons, and we are also virtual on Zoom and Facebook. You can participate with chat in Zoom. Please use the Q&amp;A feature. On Facebook, you can watch and listen only. You can also stream this live on Cohasset 143 TV. So we are everywhere you want to be. So we'll call the meeting to order, and then we will go through a roll call. If you are present, please indicate so by saying "present." Mr. Carr.
Present.
Mr. Keoni.
Present.
Mr. McCollum.
Present.
Ms. Saint-Ange.
Present.
And I, Mr. Dial, and present as well. So we have a full unanimous school committee meeting for our June 22 committee. And now I guess we will lead the pledge allegiance.
Flag is there.
There's one there and one there. So pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thanks, everyone, for joining. We have a slightly different agenda format today. We're going to see how it works from the public, always interested in feedback on agenda structure, how we're running meetings, what we're seeing. So please be forthright with that feedback. I also want to take a quick moment to recognize, even though we did a little bit, Vice Chair McClellan for his selfless service as chair for the past year, at least while I was on the committee. And he set an example that I hope I'm able to somewhat follow. So thank you very much, Vice Chair McClellan, for your service as chair.
Or deviate from.
So with that, we'll move into public comment. As you know, public comment is reserved for those agenda items where we are not covering material and the public wishes to comment and bring things to the committee. We may or may not respond directly to that, but it can help us inform future agenda items and things that we can discuss at future committee meetings. So Dr. Scollins, I believe, is monitoring public comments. Do we have any public comments?
We cannot.
All right. Giving it two beats. We are good with the public comments. So in our revised agenda item, what we have done is front-loaded a little bit the invited guests so that our invited guests don't necessarily have to sit through some more mundane committee business. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Sullivan. Do you want to introduce our invited guests?
Absolutely. It'd be my pleasure to. But I would actually ask, because I have Principal Mills here, to introduce our invited guests as both our middle school, excellent middle school teachers. So, Principal Mills, do you want to do the honors?
Sure. So this is our spotlight on CMS. And really, in May, we finished up MCAS, and we realized, well, there's about six weeks left in the school year. And I'm so proud that the faculty didn't downshift, but actually the opposite, and went into overdrive planning activities right up to the last day of school. And I printed out my June calendar, but between field trips and field days, speakers about civil rights, grade five step-up day, we had our spring arts concert last week, a student organized, student and teacher organized Juneteenth rally yesterday, sustainability showcase, and, you know, it's busy right up to the end with the night of the 29th, our eighth grade dance. There's been a lot that you could cast a spotlight on at CMS. It's been really exciting. But I think that, you know, one of the most outstanding events we had was June 9th, 10th, we had a field trip to Boston. And it was a collaboration between our eighth grade ELA teacher, Donna Amelia, and our eighth grade civics teacher, Erin Ryan. So they're here to present the field trip that they brought the whole grade on on the 9th and 10th. So be our guest.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
For coming.
Talk about our field trip. All right. So this actually was initiated by students, which makes it even more special for us. We were finishing up To Kill a Mockingbird, and they were very vested in the justice system. We had a lot of discussion about the justice system. And when they learned that the public can attend the trial, they said, please, please, can we go? Can we go? So I said, well, we'll look into it. And I learned that the Mocley Federal Courthouse had a Discovering Justice program that they welcomed students, particularly students in eighth grade that were working on their civics requirements. And this really tied in nicely with what they were working on in civics. And Erin and I had been talking for about three or four weeks about all the overlap in our curriculum. We were sharing essential questions, and we were discussing with one another what we were doing in our classrooms, and the students were making those connections. And then, all of a sudden, they asked, can we go to a courthouse? So we investigated. And the Mocley Courthouse had a program. We had to be somewhat creative because the program only allowed 60 students at a time. So we had to break the class in half. That's why we went on the 9th and the 10th. And we got even more creative. I'll have Mrs. Ryan talk about that. But so basically, we, once we identified the courthouse program, and we knew that they were learning and working on civics, we thought it would be great to go to the State House the same day. So to talk about all the branches of government and to really get to experience what we were talking about in class every day. And we really had a unique experience with this particular class because both Donna and I had the privilege of working with them in sixth grade. And then, you know, the floor kind of fell out at the end of their sixth grade. They went right into the COVID year in their seventh grade experience, and it was time to get off of campus in the eighth grade. We really wanted to make sure that they had a moment where they could go out and experience learning. And our idea was to go into the city, a great resource, so many resources posed by, that they could connect to their curriculums, both in ELA, civics, and research, actually, right here in this room that they were doing. So, yeah, so after the Tom Robinson trial for To Kill a Mockingbird, the students had analyzed the guilty verdict and the factors that limit the legal system's ability to deliver justice. They showed tremendous interest in learning more about the justice system and asked if we could visit a courthouse. They were also, at the time, working on speeches. We had analyzed Atticus's closing argument. They were working on persuasive writing and writing their own persuasive speeches that were centered around kind of issues of justice that were important to them. And the speeches were amazing. So they were really just kind of into persuasive arguments and the justice system. And then, topic three, they were learning all about the institutions of our government. So they were learning about the three branches, and it was very much focused on the federal level. And then, we started right as this field trip, right before this field trip was happening, started looking more at the state level. So it was really exciting to be able to witness the judiciary, but then also have this opportunity at the State House to see the executive and legislative functioning, too. So it was really like all three branches in one day. That's a win-win-win for civics. So we were very excited about that. And I said, you know, it's one thing to look.
Triple threat.
Yeah. It's one thing to see it in a textbook, too. It's another thing to be standing in the Senate, looking up at the dome. I mean, so we just thought, let's make sure that they're witnessing this, all of these institutions in action. Can't get better than that. Also, to actually meet representatives, and we have to give a big shout out to Kathy Serrudi, who also helped organize and set up what possible meetings we could have. We did meet with the chief, with the chief of staff, I remember, on Friday. But it was really wonderful that they actually got to meet some of their representatives, representatives to whom a lot of them are writing their letters right now, based on their research projects. So it's just a really great way to wrap up their cap, their civics action projects. So initially, we had the entire field trip planned. Everything was lined up for all of our stops. And John came to me one day and said, we cannot get buses. There's a bus driver shortage. There's a bus shortage. We can't get buses. So I went to Erin and said, we can't get buses. She said, we're still going. We're going. So you want to talk about how you creatively solve that?
Sure. So actually, thanks to one of our students, Bella Collins, her father runs a trolley tour called Mobsters and Lobsters, which I thought was wonderful. So it was like, just, you know, the solution sort of fell from the sky. And she said, you know, I can ask him and see if he's available for us. And so we called, and he had two trolleys for us on Thursday, but not enough trolleys on Friday. So again, we're getting one of these, like, a little bit, but not all the way, and maybe this thing's not going to happen. So then we kept thinking, how can we potentially use more public transportation? And that's how we landed on the Hingham Ferry for Friday. So, and again, we have to thank all of the parents that not only drove to and from the Hingham Ferry to make sure that the drop-off happened, and we all got on the boat on time, but then also the parents that offered to, you know, carpool and all the things that went into that, the logistics of that planning. So probably, moving forward, we thought, because we learned so much from this, the trolley got a little bit stuck in the morning commute. So that took a while to get into the city, whereas the ferry was just flying, you know, in about 30 minutes. And then our kids on Friday had to walk from the Mocley to the State House, which was about a mile. And then from the State House, we had the sort of power walk to catch the ferry home, and that was another mile. So of course, they're troopers, amazing kids, no complaints, right? They were amazing. But maybe in the future, what we'll do is ferry in and out, and then pick up the trolley and trolley around the city. So in doing this, we learned what works. And so we're hoping, as a legacy, you know, for future years, we'll be able to fine-tune and tweak some of these. But it was a great learning experience.
I heard it referred to as the one by land, two by sea.
Exactly. All right. So the Mocley Federal Courthouse Discovering Justice Program is designed to make sure that students are well-equipped with the knowledge, skills, and desire to build a sustained and equitable democracy. The leaders of the program, when we got into the Mocley Courthouse, were amazing, talking to them about the justice system. They made available to our students four federal judges who spoke to them, I think for about 30 or 40 minutes, about the justice system. And the kids had really great questions from their civics class, from the To Kill a Mockingbird trial. They asked excellent questions. They even talked to them about the architecture of the building and how the glass side, that slope, is meant to represent the fact that everything is open and transparent, and that that glass is leads into all of the courtrooms. And that students really were, like, paying attention to that and really interested in the architecture. And then, my group, not every group had this experience, but my group did get to sit in on a criminal trial. It was the last of the Barti Boos trial with the college cheating scandal. And they were fascinated because it was all about education, and they were talking about Georgetown University and the admission process and all of that. And they really lucked out, that they got to sit in on a criminal trial that was relevant to them. They even, they all giggled when Judge Kimins said, all rise, you know, the whole process was amazing. So it was really great.
These are just some pictures here, so you could see.
Oh, good.
In the courtrooms.
We were lucky, too. We got into the U.S. Court of Appeal, the panel courtroom. And that is very rare that people get to go into that one. So that was really neat, to go into the panel room and see only where the court appeals, where all the judges are sitting. There's no witness stand or anything there. So it's really, it's a beautiful courthouse.
And then we went to the State House, and they had another wonderful tour for us that wasn't just showing us the architecture of the building, but then more of the historical legacy, because there's so many. It's like a museum when you walk through there. And then they also were able to bring us into some of the sanctuaries. So we got to go into the house. And I know your students got to kind of sit. They got to sit in all the seeds of the Yay-Nay Cuddles.
We were there a little bit later because we were hoofing it. So we had to do almost the speed tour. But it was really just great. We got to see the magical cod that's hanging from the ceiling. There are just some really wonderful things that I think the kids.
The Cohasset flag.
Yes, the Cohasset flag.
They pointed out the Cohasset flag.
A lot of things they weren't expecting that were really wonderful. And then, a group of our kids got to meet with Senator O'Connor in the House chamber. So talk about an unforgettable experience. And we'll make sure that we reach out to them earlier to make sure that all those bookings can happen where we're on their schedule. But you can see here some of the images of the kids in the house. I know we were able to actually go into the Senate chamber because they were in session at that point. So it was really beautiful to stand in the dome. And yeah, it was just a really great day overall. And Kathy Serrudi had arranged for each student in the eighth grade to receive two official citations. So every single student in the grade got an official citation from the Senate that marked in the history books that they attended and visited the State House on that day. And then the House of Representatives offered them a citation congratulating them for fulfilling their civic responsibilities as an eighth grader. So that was really special for them to get those citations. Absolutely.
So afterwards, we did want to talk to the kids so that we could learn as much as possible for future years. We did do a survey with a Likert scale. We asked the kids about, did you enjoy the field trip? And 100% of them gave, yeah, pretty good, all the way up to the right was, like, extremely, you know, good. It was like a positive experience for all the kids who responded. So we're really happy about that. We also, in the next slide, asked kids about, what sorts of things did you like? And some of the quotes, it was just open-ended, was that they liked that we got to explore and learn new things, and we got to see a court session live, seeing the State House because it was very beautiful and historic, the opportunity to sit in a courtroom and learn about what happens in court, learning about Judge Gordon, who was one of the four federal judges we met, the trolleys that we used to get up to and back from Boston, they loved, being able to walk around the city was a really positive thing. We learned how learning can impact our future lives. A lot of the kids left saying that, saying that they had a profound interest in the law and that they would like to pursue it. And some of the kids in my group said that they'd like to be a judge someday. Talking to the judge, they really liked because she told us her story and how she became a judge. I thought her story was very interesting. Being able to sit inside courtrooms and take a quick look at a court case. Everybody got to see a court session, a case in action. And honestly, one student said everything about it. It was very cool and informative. So we're really happy with that, that we got really positive feedback from the kids.
And we both want to thank John because he was really instrumental in supporting this, this entire process, and was there, was present on both days, Thursday and Friday, making sure this thing was successful and that all of our, you know, Lucens were tied up. It was great.
Our logistics were quite complicated. He was there making sure.
Our son was a logistics guy. Yeah.
So it was excellent. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Right.
Wonderful. So I don't know, is it questions from the committee or voices in the committee? Mr. Carr.
How often do you all do something like this? Each class goes once a year?
That's our whole.
First time.
First time we've ever done this.
We hope we'll establish a tradition.
Yeah. Congratulations. It's terrific.
Thanks.
My son is still talking.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I just, he took the bow to the Lord, I do. You know, he's just been whistling to go to school lately. And I think it's because of all the activities and coming up. Basically, this is the first graduating class in middle school. It started in sixth grade, my son's grade. And like you were talking about earlier, he missed so much. And from sixth to eighth grade, I was just looking at a picture from my son two years ago. He's like this. Now he's, it's amazing from sixth to eighth grade. And these kids definitely lost a lot of that. To see, to see this was such a, as a parent, and to see him just whistling out to school, he just appreciated every moment of it. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And to you, you're creative. That's, that's really stepping up. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
What I'd say, thank you, Paul. Paul's family offered a carpool as many kids.
That's Tracy.
She's Tracy.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. I absolutely love these sorts of things. I would love to see us do more of them because they, I think they still inspiration. I mean, you see some kids that they want to get into law, want to get into judge, maybe get a judgeship one day. And I think it helps different types of learners visualize things, you know, certain concepts that maybe don't come through as strong and maybe, you know, sort of folklore verbal method in the classroom. And it's really important to have that experiential-based learning, I think. And so I'm glad that we've started to bring that experience to our students. It struck me as you were discussing the challenges you had, but also in sort of conceiving the trip itself, that this is exactly, this is a great example of the type of thing that, that we could benefit from the Community Resource Guide that I think, so a school committee goal this past year, we didn't actually complete it, and I think it'll probably continue, is to develop, I forget what exactly we call it, this sort of database, where like the, we know which families have which experts, you know, are experts in which fields or have businesses in certain fields that can offer resources to the students. So in that situation, maybe we would have people involved in transportation. We would know that the Mobsters and Lobsters tour was owned and operated by one of the parents. We would be able to go right to them. Or, for example, there are many people involved in law in town, and, you know, you might have had a connection to, say, the United States Attorney's Office, and you'd be able to have a discussion with the federal prosecutor, including the judge, or maybe the United States Marshal as well, in that building, or maybe even someone more conveniently placed than the Mocley Courthouse, though it is a beautiful courthouse, and it's an awesome trip, Discovering Justice, awesome program. But the Supreme Judicial Court in Massachusetts is actually right next door to the State House. And you never know, someone may have had a connection there to one of the, one of more Supreme Court justices. They'd be able to see the actual Rome of the Supreme Court in Massachusetts and then walk right across the street. So, I mean, there's, I'm just giving examples of like, you know, all kinds of, a whole host of ways that we can improve upon various experiences for learning experience for the kids. But this, this like made me think about that because it was so clear that we could have benefited from that. And that's true, and we did, we happened to anyway. But so hopefully we can, we can develop that. So thank you so much for doing this for them. I mean, it looks like they had an amazing time. It's like 95% of it was, you know, it was great. So thanks so much.
Thanks for having us. Thanks for supporting us.
Ms. Saint-Ange, anything?
Yeah, don't forget the interview. No, thank you. And I love that you persevered through all of the challenges that came your way. It seems like we have all a teacher's space to look, which is in the past few years. And you guys just didn't give up. That's awesome. And I love that you're going to stay on theme today. And I hope you continue that. I think that any opportunity for a field trip should be taken. It's so important, like, is that to just get off campus and go to the world and go apply what everyone's been learning. So I'm lucky, yes, that you guys took them. Thank you.
I'll just offer a slightly different perspective. I mean, obviously, the field trip was a great success. And I can tell by the way you told the story that you even had fun learning about it. But I think this is another area where we can highlight, I think, one of the great assets of our district, and that is our teachers. I mean, no one said you have to go to a field trip. It's not on your, your performance. And no one certainly said you have to do it and find buses, and then find boats, and then find all this stuff. So I just want to thank you for all the work you put into this, and how much you care to give the kids experiential learning. And it's not lost on me or this committee that you guys really go above and beyond. So thank you for doing that. Obviously, the kids loved it, and it's inspiring to them, and it's, you know, rounds out an education. So want to just express appreciation for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely. And also, the collaboration is very inspiring. So that's wonderful to see as well. So thank you very much. Have a great night, and thanks for what you do.
Thanks for having us.
All right. So we have our next invited guest.
Yes, we do.
Mr. Sweeney and Mr. Ford.
So I can probably, Mr. Scott, play the shoes, I guess.
Sure. Clearly, we have George Sweeney, who's the department chair for our health and wellness department, and Mr. Ford, who's both their coaches, and Mr. Ford is one of our wellness teachers in the ninth grade.
Hi, everyone.
Hello. Thanks for having us tonight. And so we're just going to do a quick overview of what's going on in the health curriculum. And this year kind of starts the, or ends the year that we started freshman wellness four years ago. So this graduating class is the class that had, has had the most health here at Cohasset in, you know, as long as I've been involved, probably ever. And with that, with the addition of Mr. Ford's wellness class, and then I have them as sophomores and seniors, we've seen our trends in the youth risk behavior survey come down in almost every category across the, across the board, whether it's relationship abuse, or whether it's vaping, and whether it's alcohol or drugs, we've seen a trend in the right direction. So we can only hope, and certainly, Mr. Ford and I, and Mr. Scott, as always, believe that that could be health, health-induced there by the amount of health that they've had. Not to mention what a great senior class. And I mentioned in a class night how respectful they are of one another, and how, how respectful they are, it seems, in the community and around the school. I've seen it in my own class, and I'm sure Mr. Ford has, too. And hopefully, these are the things that we're reinforcing by having more health, and things that the parents are reinforcing at home. We know that specifically through all the data, the more the things are reinforced to our teens, the more they tend to use those, those techniques in their young adult life. So, you know, let's, let's hope. And I, and I believe that these are the differences that we've made. So again, this is the first time the scene graduating seniors have had three years of health. And Mr. Ford's going to tell us a little bit about what happens in the freshman wellness class, and then I'll finish up with what's going on in the sophomore and senior classes.
Thank you for, glad you gave us the opportunity to present this tonight. What we, well, five years ago, we were in a transition phase. I was transitioning out of being an athletic director for 18 years. And we were also noticing, we were really in a situation where we're looking at youth risk behavior surveys, we're seeing that there was some troubling trends here in town, and we wanted to add more health to the curriculum. Kids had health in the middle school in different units than they had it in 10th grade. And obviously, freshman year is probably the year they need health the most. So Tor and I started talking, and we pitched to Mr. Scott, and it was, it was an easy pitch. He certainly supported it right away. And we got support from the administration to create a new course called Freshman Wellness. And the whole idea was, I go back to 32 years ago, when I was student teacher, and you'd itself, they had a freshman wellness course that wasn't just phys ed. It was absolutely the opposite. It was all kinds of great classes revolving on health, around substance abuse, around mental health. So I started, just Tor and I started thinking about, we spent the summer plan, the curriculum, and we've really focused on three main areas: health education, social-emotional learning, and fitness and nutrition. And the health education piece is really the core of the class, makes a half of the curriculum. Begin the whole, I begin it with some, the course with some goal setting and social-emotional learning activities, but then we dive right into mental health. The entire month, first month of the course is focusing on mental health, particularly coming out of COVID. The kids, we all have learned a lot more about mental health, and it's something that we can talk about now a bit more. And just giving kids the, the skills, the idea of what are protection factors, what are risk factors, what do they do if they feel like they or somebody they know is in trouble? So mental health is really the base. I tell them it's the foundation we build the whole course off. From there, we go into understanding diversity. We start talking about what makes people different? How do we respect the differences in people? Gender stereotypes, gender identity, sexual orientation, racial and cultural diversity. And we leave that all around social justice. We really talk about, what, what, what type of community are we going to have here? Is this going to be a school that they're going to be in for the next four years where they're going to respect each other? From there, now that we've built this diversity, that they do a whole project on their, what social justice means to them, and they pick the topic that means a lot to them, they present that to the class in multimedia forms. And then we go into bullying prevention. So now that we've built the foundation of understanding, what do we do to prevent disrespect? What do we do to prevent harmful relationships? What do we do to prevent, you know, the whole concept of bullying in schools? So now that they understand what kids are going through, mental health issues, what kids are going through, that don't feel part of a nation, or feel left out, or feel like they're, they're being discriminated against, now I think there's more understanding of why bullying prevention is important. We tie in social-emotional learning the whole time, goal setting, journaling. We do an inspirational social-emotional learning curriculum called Believe in You, which is really great. There's, you know, I show them a video every week, they do reflection writings on it. And then the second semester, second term, we dive right into substance abuse. We talk about, the freshman, I build the foundation for him as a sophomore teacher. I really focus on the four gateway drugs: alcohol, you know, vaping and tobacco, marijuana, and prescription drugs. So we build that foundation. The kids understand what a gateway drug is, using our data from Safe Harbor and youth risk behavior surveys that we have. We know that the first use of alcohol and drugs really in this community spikes between freshman and sophomore year. It jumps up dramatically. So the fact that they're getting this information now, and they're not judgmental ways, you know, I tell them, they have to make their own decisions, but these are the facts. This is what happens if you do use drugs and alcohol. So we spend the majority of the second term on substance abuse. And then, all the way along, the tying in fitness and nutrition with all of this. So they're not in the classroom all week, but obviously, it's a wellness class. So at least once or twice a week, we're getting out into the gymnasium, we're outside. And we have this really great program that we bought out of necessity during COVID because we were in lockdown, and we had to find a way for the kids to stay active. It's called PLATFORM. And it's amazing. And it's amazing. It's it's an app. It's a it's a program. It's a whole written curriculum. It's something where kids can do fitness at home. They can do fitness in a gym. They can do fitness outside. And so the first semester, we build a whole base, a base of introduction to fitness, fitness concepts. And then second semester, they get to choose their fitness. So they can do strength training. They can do yoga. They can do dance fitness, mindfulness, you know, fitness anywhere. I mean, kids get to choose what they want to do. And it also has an unbelievable written curriculum on nutrition, which they just finished with the kids this week. So all of that, you know, kind of is the is the whole wellness wheel, if you want to call it that, kind of tied into one. And then we've added Project Adventure this year into the curriculum with the with the help of the CEF. So Mr. Sweeney was in the gym with me with all our freshmen the other day doing low ropes elements with the kids. So that all ties in. And I really don't teach a traditional phys ed class that I I taught for almost thirty years here. We'll throw pickleball in there or something that the kids really love. But they're more excited about now fitness and working on their own and and understanding some of these pieces. And then we finish up a little bit of first aid and CPR this week and next week. So now that's that's it. That's the course.
After Mr. Ford finishes up with, you know, the drug, the alcohol piece, it's reinforced sophomore year. Some of it is, a lot of it is actually project based things where they work together in groups and and research a lot of the details about drug and alcohol abuse across the country. And even in our own area, we look at our U.S. stats, we look at world stats, we look at South Shore stats. We look at other use for risk behavior surveys from other towns and kind of see, you know, where we line up. And are we doing a good job? Are we doing a better job? And luckily, in the last couple of years, we, our trends are going down. So that's what we want to see. This winter, I was fortunate enough to go to a conference in DC, Drug and Alcohol Conference DC. Mr. Noise and I went with the good graces of Safe Harbor support. And they sent us down to that conference, which was fantastic. I brought a lot of information back from that, some lessons that I actually taught right away as soon as I got back the first day. It was exciting. And and I think that was, you know, well received by the kids. As far as our, some of the speakers that we bring in with the relationship information, because when we're discussing diversity and SEL, you have to tie in relationships. So we bring in a presenter called Annika Reich, and she's with One Love, which is a nationwide and even reaching beyond the United States and to other countries. One Love is a support system for teaching kids how to treat one another, how to navigate relationships, mostly and and quite a bit on romantic relationships and how to how to work with that. She talks to the kids a lot about how to set boundaries, refusal skills, respect. We talk about consent. We have very direct discussions about that. And then senior year, she comes in with a curriculum that is more based on kind of telling the kids what's going to happen in college and your relationships are going to be more intense because you're going to be a little bit older. And again, we review consent and toxic behavior in relationships in college. Control, where partners may try to control you in in different scenarios because you're away from home now and you're on your own in college. And, you know, can your partner or will your partner try to control you in different ways? So we teach the kids about red flags in those situations and what to look for, how to set those boundaries early. Know what you want out of a relationship, and it's not always easy, especially if it's the first time. But we give them plenty of resources and information to to kind of guide themselves through those those things that will happen as they get older. So kind of, I I've really enjoyed this. We've been doing it for about three years now. And One Love has been a tremendous partner here at Cohasset, so hoping to continue that. We also have five kids, I believe, five kids are going to be ambassadors with One Love. So they they're involved in the foundation, so they're going to also help out here on and may go into Mr. Ford's class next year. So my kids that had One Love as sophomores are going to learn from the One Love Foundation how to talk to underclassmen about relationships and things like that. So they'll be juniors talking to freshmen. And we like that oftentimes because sometimes when it's the teacher talking, you know, they're in a class. But when it's a kid that's the captain of their team or a colleague, I mean, a kid that they look up to, oftentimes they'll they'll hone in on those kids, and I think that will be helpful next year. And then just capping it off, again, you know, that incredible grant that we got for our climbing wall and all the low elements. You know, from the CEF, we started Project Adventure this year. I got all the fourth quarter seniors on the rock wall this year, the ones that wanted to climb, which was about ninety percent of them. And then the sophomores all did the low elements, so they'll be ready to do the climbing wall next year. And we had Mr. Forrest on the, we did three lessons on the low elements, which is really exciting. And that is all team building. It's not team against team. It's how this whole group could could solve a problem and how can we do it together? And what techniques could we use? And your freshmen had a ball with that, kind of figuring out, you have one person, you know, suggesting this and one person suggesting that. And then they put their heads together and they try to figure stuff out. So that was really exciting. And I'm just glad that Project Adventure is going to be part of our curriculum moving forward in a much fuller way than the last couple of years. And we've got a lot of workshops. The whole staff has been trained in it. And so we're kind of ready to hit the ground running in the fall with Project Adventure being a big part of our curriculum. So looking forward to that. I guess, any questions from anybody on on our broad brush of the curriculum? Mr. Carr?
This is really wonderful. Do you, so when the kids come up here to the ninth grade and stuff, are you feeling that they are prepared from our other schools? Or is this like a shock to them? Is it, but I think it's very timely as they get up to high school. I think it's very much part of that transition. Are you feeling, you have any thoughts?
I would say shock, you know, our our freshman, I mean, our middle school wellness is six, seven, eight. So they're getting the foundations of what a sixth grader should get, the seventh grader, eighth grader. I don't know if it's they're going to have the shock more of of what their, you know, some of their friends might start suggesting and doing and experimenting with. So, you know, they're probably in Mr. Ford's class when a lot of this is going on, or then in my class. So that's why I think our focus is ninth and tenth grade before they start using it. So, but I don't know about shock.
I think it's more of just getting them to come out of their shells and be willing to talk about these things. They they look at me something like, what are you talking about? Why are you saying this? You know, why you, why you, like, you even start talking about diversity? And they just, they clamp up at first, you know, and you just keep pointing it out there like, this is what, this is real life. This is what we're going to talk about in this class. And it's okay to express your opinion. You should have to do it in a respectful way, you know, and just just to get them to begin to talk about. Builds a foundation for the talkings that he's going to talk about and and go deeper into sophomore and and senior health. But it's it's just something they didn't have before, like, there was a huge gap. They would show up to sophomore. In fact, I took a couple sophomore classes at times for you when your schedule was full. It was, that was the shock, was when they didn't have a freshman health program and they were sophomores and they had no clue, you know. Sometimes it's too late to them not have that point.
I think peer pressure is probably the biggest thing that they deal with. You know, seventh, eighth grade, there's some peer pressure, but, you know, to do what? You know, to, you know, knock on somebody's door or something like that. Whereas then when they get to ninth, tenth grade, the peer pressure is going to be for many different things. So I would think that would probably be the biggest thing. So we're lucky here in Cohasset, the peer influence being what you see compared to peer, you know, peer pressure being, hey, do this, do this. I think we have, our influences are going on the better side than the not better side. So we can only hope through peer influence and less kids using, less kids partying, that that will continue.
Hey, Mr. Carr, we do have some health education at our Deer Hill too. So it does move in.
This is where I am. That said, my son is really going well with this. And I got to say, like, the transformation from middle school to high school, they do a good job because there is some introduction to weights. And because it's six, seventh, and eighth, you really don't want children doing weights. You kind of want them doing their own body weights, pull ups, sit ups, chin ups. Those are all good. But now as they get older, they can start hopefully using the new equipment we get in the gym. Intent. We got a lot of ninth graders advocating for that, which is great. Yeah, I mean, especially like introducing to fitness. Like, when someone looks at someone and they're big and strong, we all look like, oh, that guy's in the best shape of his life. But we don't know that. We don't know if he can touch his toes. We don't know if he can run up the stairs. And we trained eighty eight firefighters, and the biggest guy came up to me and whispered, I got no power. And we worked with them for three weeks. And yeah, he started running and working with his daughter, running with his daughter. Now, these are the things, especially with journaling. Journaling is so important because especially that you can start like measuring how your success is, right? For the first time, you ran on the treadmill and you ran for like a minute, you know, you got half of your puff. And then next time you get two minutes. Well, guess what? It takes twenty one days to form a habit. So if you can form that, I know I'm preaching to the choir. And I mean, like, it's like, you form that habit, and now you got a healthy lifestyle for it. And I also want to give you guys some of the things that we're working on as an administration too. We're working on nutrition as well. We're going to form a subcommittee based on nutrition. So we're we're so glad we could work with you and move that forward. Because, again, this is this is so important to mental health, like you said, and social emotional learning. And it just ties in everything to that. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that, you know, my concern is after school. Right? So I I coach basketball. We have thirty kids in our basketball. And I coach a C team, okay? Started off with two wins and we ended up with seven wins in a row and retired for first. And it was unbelievable to see these kids just step up. But I don't know if any of these kids are going to make the basketball team. But I told every one of them, they got a better shot than anybody else, right? So we got thirty kids, fifteen kids make the basketball team. What happens to the other fifteen kids, right? They don't play. There's no basketball for them. By the time they get up to seniors, we get three kids playing basketball in the whole school. So what, I was talking to a coach over there with Manhattan. And they have a program that they let the kids play on Sunday because if they don't make the team, play a pickup. And they put a little league together, similar to what we do in the summer, I coach summer league basketball. Do you see some of those programs and how we could build some of those programs, lacrosse or anybody? Because there's nothing worse as a parent to see a kid, and these aren't my kids that I'm talking about. And a lot of kids don't even get to play, right? So they, you pay the two hundred, four hundred bucks, whatever it costs, and the and the coaches don't play them. And I think it really sits on their mental health, right? So if they could, and the other thing that the coach had brought up to me is that you don't really see a kid, like, you pick him in ninth, ninth grade, right? Oh, yeah, he's on the team. Well, guess what? He grew to two feet that you didn't know about. He's one of the best basketball players out there. And you never really give the kid a shot because you already got your team set up. So these programs that I'm talking about, you do you think you could support some of those programs to get some of the?
Well, we would probably support fitness, but I think that's more of a question maybe for Mr. Scott. And this noise about where the direction of extracurricular stuff goes. But I mean, I think Ron and I would support fitness all the time. But I think Project Adventure also is one of those things that will get kids to learn strengths that they may not have had before. So maybe a kid gets stuck from a team, but they become a rock climber or they become, you know, they start.
On the track team.
Right. And so we're kind of hoping that that's that's part of opening up different advocates for kids.
Right. And just a response out of the while, like, as I'm an athletic director for eighteen years here, you can get the nicest fitness center in the world, but if you don't also build in the ability to staff it and keep it open for the kids, it's a museum. It's it's like the old sofas that were in your grandmother's house that were covered in plastic, right? No one's going to use it, right? So if you if you don't, if you guys, if you do build a facility that you're talking about, you also need to build in, how's it going to stay open? How's it going to be open to the public? What's the access going to be for kids? Because it's useless if they can't use it. We can use it in our class. It's great.
Right.
But what you're talking about is what it should be used as used.
Right.
All the time.
Like a community center. Actually, the police officers can use it. More police officers in the building, more firefighters in the building. So I I I know we're working on this.
But at least, at least two to six.
Yeah, habits set.
Yeah.
I agree. And I and I think there's also ways to to get to fund it would be to maybe, you know, some memberships. I mean, it could be something that, you know, this is this is a whole ramble thing. But honestly, if I could know that my child from three to five was involved in pickup basketball and I can come pick them up, I think that would be wonderful.
This, I think, I agree. There's a lot we can explore and grow. I mean, I'm proud that our after school admission programs are growing. And you see that it's growing, the middle school is growing, Deer Hill, that's all feeding into the high school. Our stipended positions are very healthy and robust. But I think you're right. I think there's a, particularly as we move into more up to date fitness centers and potentially in your building at some point. Now, these are, these are places that should be community centers.
Yeah, and I I also want to add too, as the wellness community, I want to give a shout to those that we recognize that there's a food gap in our school. So there's going to be a vending machine that's going to give kids fresh sandwiches. That's going to be at the start of next year. So I think that ties into your whole nutrition.
We talked about the kids.
Yeah.
Cutting that gap down of, don't go five hours, don't eat.
Right, exactly. If you want to, it's like your body's a garbage system too. You don't feed it. And then if you stuff it all with food, it's going to, you're just going to get slower and it's going to slow you down. Yeah, my kids can't either.
The way it's going.
So we'll thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Mr. McCullough?
Yeah, I'll try and be as quick as possible. I, this is enormously important, increasingly enormously important, fast and effective education all throughout primary, but especially secondary school. I have two primary questions I had for you related to, first and foremost, exposure to the pitfalls of digital, and I use lack of better phrase. I don't think it's resource, but digital resources like social media apps, things like that. That that terrifies me in a word, those things, like the fact that, like, kids have grown up with that and they can just, they can just irreparably damage themselves in some ways before they even get to start. I wonder, is there any exposure? I don't think I caught any of this.
In the bullying prevention piece, I do a whole piece on the dangers of sexting and inappropriate messaging. There's a whole part of that bullying prevention correcting is that. And then you, and then we back it up to everything we just learned about diversity. So if you're going online and you are saying something that's making fun, you know, calling out someone as part of a marginalized group, then it's all tied together, you know? And if you're doing things that are inappropriate online, and then he runs with it when he gets down to his his curriculum.
We do a fair amount. We do a whole unit on on digital responsibility and stuff like that. Generally, unfortunately, there's always a current event to talk about this. That's a good thing. It's a good thing, you know, as long as it's not too close to home. You know, sometimes it happens, you know, close. But because we've had, you know, it's just the way kids are wired. They're just, they're going to, they they don't understand that this is a social platform, that their phone is a social platform twenty four seven. Everything that they put on it is out there to see. And, you know, that's a, that's a maybe a story for another day. But that's what I'm hoping that you two can make them understand.
They also get that in a lot of other areas, digital literacy and computer science.
And I was going to say, it starts when they're really small and all, when they're working on their devices and they have digital citizenship. Private and things like that. So that really starts young because they have devices in their hand at a very early age. So.
And right through to Mr. Surdi's class and the technology we have at the high school. And then as we grow our technology programming, it's, it's, it takes a village with that because it's so. And I know, you know this, but your question's a really good one. Just, I just want you to know, it's, and if he's listening, it is a, it's more of a holistic, complete curriculum.
That's good.
Than just, you know, a couple of health classes.
That's that's really good.
They know what's right or wrong with me. I think my my role is now, this is the consequences, you know, all the way from what happens in school or every college admissions office has a kid working for them right now. It's looking through your your social media you provided to school. So if you want that on your social media.
But that's worth a deeper look. And as we as we help they are, how we're how we're actually looking at the standards. I think that could be a future conversation, as Tor mentioned.
Okay, that's that's good. Kurt Tomnus, did you have something?
I was just going to add to the CMS. We we have a policy where your phone is away for the day, is what we always say. We always explain to the kids that, you know, this time during six, seventh, and eighth, during the school day, it's more important to be connected with one another, be in the moment, you know, even in cafeteria, certainly in class, the hallways. So they they live it with us, the fact that you can live with your phone put away for a whole day. So as they get older and they get. As they get older and they, they, you know, in high school have the judgment, um, maturity to make those decisions, it'll be, it's just a policy of us.
All right. So all the teachers feel that we're adequately approaching this from a perspective of this stuff is, can be very detrimental to other people and very detrimental to yourselves.
Well, yes. And I, I think adequately, I think it's, it's constantly upon all of us to try to make sure we're staying with what's happening out there and making sure that we're doing that in our, in our curricula. And I think there's a, there's a good point being made about, you know, the times when you don't use your device and there's, there's a lot of thought around when you should and shouldn't. And then there's also the thought that you need to learn how to manage it as well. Um, so I think, you know, we have great educators who I think are doing a nice job sort of working that through. And I, I do, I do think middle school is a, is a, is a time when, you know, the responsibility may have not, has not caught up with their, uh, you know, ability to access information. So I think that's a very, very appropriate time, as is elementary, to be really mindful of it. Of course, you have to be mindful in high school as well, but I think maybe protective is the word.
Okay. And my second issue um, has to do with um, sort of more um, gender-related issues, I guess, gen, gender sensitivity for lack of a better phrase, but it sort of comes to a few different things and, and uh, because I, I have a personal concern, um, you know, I don't think just in district, but certainly in our district and not for the reasons that I, I just, I want to make sure our, both genders are, are, you know, all genders and non-binary folks are sort of integrating one another in a very healthy way so that we don't have that maybe more um, antiquated approach where, you know, females have this role, males have this role, especially from a sexual perspective. And um, I, I wonder if there, is, is there any, ever any gender-specific or, and I know sometimes you, you have to even be sensitive with that because you don't want to single anyone out that may not identify with a particular gender, but I do feel that on the whole, sometimes discussions can be more um, valuable if you are having them in a, within a group of people that sort of identify the same way, um, especially when you're talking about. So for example, I, I think that like uh, males in our society, um, I think, you know, are taught to sort of suppress emotion. Uh, if you're a guy, you really try not to cry in public, something like, you know, just an example of what I'm talking about. Um, and then I think, you know, women, uh, you know, or not women, but females, I, I see especially the criminal courts are, are more often victims of like domestic violence because they may be more susceptible to their partners, you know, leaning on them on a, on a, on a physical. Is there, so you get into these, these issues that maybe you do, okay?
But part of the understanding of diversity, you know, we start with gender stereotype, we talk about gender roles, talk about transgender issues, LGBTQ issues, like, and you'd be surprised, the kids in this generation are far more comfortable talking about it than we are. They, they could have, what you just expressed to us, they could have expressed to us in thirty seconds. It's, it's shocking almost how comfortable they are expressing. Now, sometimes they don't express it appropriately and that's kind of our role is to set up a forum so they can talk appropriately and express things appropriately and, and they understand what's right and wrong. I mean, they've been exposed to it. We, you know, we're learning on the, on the fly as adults where they're, this is all they've known.
So you don't feel like there's a real need to actually segregate them into different groups? They can have these constructive, productive discussions.
They have all the time.
The natural evolution of things, okay? And the One Love program, um, you know, especially where it focuses on sexual health. Is there any aspect um, of that program, slightly uncomfortable topic, but I, I think it's, it's necessary to address, like, you know, especially with like internet pornography at this point in time, like I think that people's exposure to first sexual, you know, first exposure to sexual conduct is a lot different than it was when we were all kids, just because of what's available to them. Is there at least some acknowledgement of that sort of purple elephant in the room and like how that's not real? And that's not what's expected of you as an adult and things like that? Is that, is there any, is there, is that part of the One Love program?
So, uh, One Love does talk about um, all different types of relationships, okay? Um, uh, I don't think Onika's expertise is, is discussing pornography and stuff like that. Um, I show a video, a hard-hitting documentary called The Bystander to the Seniors. And I send, The Bystander discusses breaking down misogynistic behavior, misogynistic uh, thoughts, misogynistic comments. And um, it's a, it's a one-hour, like I said, pretty hard-hitting documentary. And then we have another full day and a half uh, to discuss it. We go in groups first and discuss about how, what you thought about that. Um, there is mention of pornography and how it affects kids and how it affects people and then going to college and, you know, what is reality and
I mean, there's studies that, that especially males can be adversely impacted by
So we, um, you know, we, we definitely put them on the spot there and have great discussion about it. And there is in the video, the talk of the uh, fraternities and the kind of pro-culture thing. And um, so we have some pretty in-depth conversations about that. And I will say that our seniors are very forthcoming in the discussion. They're not afraid. And um, and, and they kind of say, say what they, what they want to say. And, and I think it's good because it opens up for some really good conversation and uh, where, what the boys' responsibility are in this, in this situation. And what the women's responsibility is in this, uh, calling out their uh, boyfriends or same gender, whatever it may be. Um, to say, that's not cool to say that, or that's not okay, or that makes me feel like this. And um, and the boys to call out their, their bros and uh, their behavior as well, be the one that can step up and say it. Maybe you don't, and in the, you know, part of the, end of the video, not to go longer, but is do you hear it and not agree with it is one thing, but are you willing to say something to your friend about why it's not okay? And so we talked about that and they also in the video at the end, give skills about how to say something to your best friend about, you know, I, I didn't really appreciate what you said there in the big school. So, um, yes, it's, it's, it's part of the curriculum itself.
That's good to hear. Well, well, thank, thanks uh, to both of you.
Yeah, and it's not a comfortable situation. It's not, but it's, but it's relevant and it, and it's necessary. And I think the kids, our kids are just so good to, you know, talk about things like that and be, be willing to talk about it.
They need to.
It's great to hear that you're having this open, you know, candid discourse with them. Thank you both.
Seniors are almost too honest.
Good though.
But it's a good thing. It's my, it's my lab because then I'm, I, you know, then I go to the soccer and I was like, okay, okay, I heard that.
That's good. No, it's a good thing. All right, thank you.
Ms. Allen.
Um, thanks, guys. Um, it's great to have two of my teachers here right now. I, I just love how this curriculum has developed and evolved over time.
Since you had it, right?
I had it and um, that's appropriate. That has changed since I was here. Um, it's just really great. I just feel like you're focusing on the whole child and really helping our community as a whole by helping kids feel empowered to have these discussions and to get to know kind of who they are and what they can do and what they can access and, you know, physically, emotionally, you know.
So I, I just have a real quick question. Um, and it's good that you're both tackling these uncomfortable subjects and make it less uncomfortable over time as you deal with them, um, but certainly for people at the school committee, it's, it's, it's hard. But Mr. Ford, you mentioned uh, in your discussions, you know, getting kids comfortable to talk about these things. I guess do you have any, I don't want to call them tactics, but any sort of methods by which you make sure that people feel that they're in a safe space, that they can reflect their views as opposed to feeling like they have to, you know, say one thing or the other thing because they feel like, you know, they get that kind of peer, you know, self-consciousness. Yeah, so why begin with a lot of social emotional learning activities? So we begin with a lot of identifying your emotions. Uh, we use uh, emotional scales. We use um, different activities, games, different, so they begin to develop. Like I talk about the first day, our, our class is a community, you know, and if, if they're gonna be members of the community, there's, there's certain responsibilities to be a part of the community. So we don't jump into real hard subjects right away. We, we, we really kind of work our way, they set some goals. We do a lot of just getting to know each other. And then we start to, you know, when we start talking about mental health, we start talking about it, you know, on the big picture, but then it starts to personalize. They start thinking about, hey, I have a friend that potentially has some issues. And then it, it develops. I don't, I'll start with the toughest subjects right away. But once they start to feel comfortable, then it's amazing how they come out of their, their shell. And it's also amazing, I tell, I talk to the kids, I'm just as concerned about the kids who say something inappropriate these days because being canceled is sometimes in some cases more dangerous than someone who's bullied, you know? I try to protect all the kids and, and try to make, I want them all to be successful. And I, I, they have to understand that they have, they have the right to, to express their opinions, but they have the responsibility to do it in a responsible, respectful way. And so that's really the, the foundation that if we can build that as freshmen in this school, it's gonna be a much better place.
Absolutely. Well said.
So um, you know, as, when I was a kid, my health education was a one-class video. So I'm very pleased that we're, this is obviously very important. So thank you for everything you do for our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
May I add one echo that? Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
So that, uh, those are our invited guests. So we'll move on to, to school updates. Uh, and we start with the uh, student advisory council report. I don't think we have one this time.
We do not.
But just, just so people know, this is a, at home watching, this is a standing agenda item that we'll have. And you'll see that through this agenda. Uh, many of these are standing agenda items. We'll just skip forward. Uh, if we don't have them, it's, it's, some of them are tools to make sure that we hold the place and keep the discussions that we have going. So with that, we'll go to school news with Dr. Patrick Sullivan.
Very nice. Thank you very much. I also want to just welcome Mr. Dial as the chair.
Thank you.
Already moving in like you've been here forever, which is great. And of course, Mr. Carr is the secretary and Mr. Collins is the vice chair. Yeah, hey, Bill. With the mystic, uh, Keery and this thing, just wonderful, uh, your, all of your service here. Um, I, we're, is a very hefty agenda, so I won't belabor the, this update. But just to mention that what you saw from Ms. Ryan and um, Ms. Amelia is exactly what's happening in the district right now. So a lot of culminating activities. There's some wonderful field trips, a lot of experiential learning. Uh, the middle school did have a wonderful arts night uh, this past week, which was, uh, I'm losing track of the time of the week. Into one uh, very late June week, but um, it, it was extremely successful. And thank you to um, everyone who helped uh, put that on. As was mentioned by Principal Mills, we've been doing a lot of celebrating of uh, Juneteenth throughout the district and also with Pride Month and diversity. We, we had some wonderful diversity, uh, diversity day at Deer Hill where we had um, Mrs. Crimmins and Mrs. Humphrey. Got it right? I want to make sure I have the correct educators with their, uh, with students uh, from the high school. Went down and helped uh, put on a diversity day, activities, um, no doubt inspired by some of the things they get in Mr. uh, Sweeney and Mr. Ford's classes, but wonderful um, collaborative experiential learning around diversity. We have a cleanup day at the high school on the twenty-fourth, which is Friday, so people are likely, but maybe you've noticed Mr. Keery of wonderful courtyard, um, doing some great work around the district and making sure that our facilities outside are up to snuff uh, recently. And then of course, I'd be revisive, I did mention our sports teams and that all of our sports teams did wonderful uh, this spring. But we had four teams who uh, made the final four. We had uh, boys tennis uh, who, who did lose inevitably to Linfield, uh, but did wonderfully. Uh, we had our boys lacrosse, was there three teams in the final four? It's three teams in the final four. At the four. And then we had our boys lacrosse who lost to Wakona, but in overtime and I'm told it was a game to, to beat all games. And then um, yesterday we had our girls just fall short in the state finals, girls lacrosse uh, against a really excellent, I'm told, men field team. So congratulations to all those teams, to our coaches, to all of our kids who participated in sports in the spring. Really amazing season and um, our kids really did wonderfully in sportsmanship and also obviously in achievement in that way. So that in a nutshell, my updates. We're looking forward to a few other things. We have a great um, picnic happening uh, for our fifth grade families and, and students at Deer Hill coming up and uh, some really nice culminating activities. It's been very nice.
Speaking of culinating, I believe this will be our last school committee meeting while schools in session. School ends on the thirtieth, I believe.
Correct.
Anything that, any updates for the school committee as a committee during the school year about the end of school? I imagine everyone's looking forward to uh, to shifting gears and moving forward.
Yes, well, the end of school, as you know, as you said, is on the thirtieth and that is what we call an early release day, which is a different, different language that I used in my previous district for what, what, what it is. It means no lunches served and the dismissal, when I have two principals here to, and a assistant principal to help me if I'm wrong. But it's a, it's a eleventh day dismissal for our middle and high school. And that equates to a uh, twelve fifteen and twelve twenty dismissal at our um, two elementaries. So we're looking forward to that, not to missing the students. We'll very much miss the students, but uh, to ending, ending our year on a, on a good note.
No doubt. Most of them, if not all of them, will be back except for maybe our senior class who's off to college. But we'll replace them with some new kindergartners and the cycle continues.
That's right.
So.
And some really good transition work, I have to say. I'm very proud of it. I've been highlighting it in my newsletters and I'll continue to do that. We've made a great uh, transition that um, that Miss Noise helps run and organizes and has some really nice transition activities.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. So we'll move on to our next uh, agenda box, which is teaching and learning. The goal here, just for people watching at home, is to align some of our school agenda items with our strategic plan as a, as a district. And so one of our compass points is teaching and learning. So we have some agenda items here that are teaching and learning. And uh, Dr. Sullivan, Dr. Collins are just going to speak to teaching and learning?
We'll take this.
So things are winding down a bit, obviously, as we get toward the end of the year. But um, and so committees are finishing up their work, making plans for next year. But we do have our summer learning program, which we've been fortunate to have a grant over the past couple of years. And so this year, we made it a little bit smaller because our funding sources were a little bit lighter, but um, but we still have uh, a two-week program and that is for our um, students who are in grade, going into grade one and up to grade twelve. We had about seventy students. And so we did have a little tighter criteria with the past because of our funding. We were able to really say anybody could do it. But um, we really did have to stick to what the grant asked us to do, which was really to focus on students who um, were students with disabilities that weren't you necessarily recommend for E S Y program, which is our extended school year for students with disabilities. I'm looking at Yale students, students that had already been identified and needing support during the school year. So, but we still have about seventy students, so we're really excited about that. The uh, grades one through five will be in the first two weeks of August and it's a half-day program, just like we've been doing. So um, that will be lovely. And then um, six through twelve is really tutoring. We found that even though we ran a bit of a half-day program last year, despite, but um, we thought tutoring would be uh, better for these students. So um, they get a fifty-minute session and there are eight sessions in either E L A and/or math, depending on what the students needs are. Um, and then new this year, we are adding a kindergarten jump start, which was
Very exciting.
Yes, and so that was Mrs. Farrell's idea. And so we have seventy-four students who are going to come. That's the last week of July and the students will come in small groups and it's about an hour and a half or so. Um, and they come two times during the week and they get to see what the school looks like, feels like. Go to the cafeteria, kind of learn some of the routines because, you know, going to kindergarten is a very big deal. Uh, but it's also a little anxiety provoking for children and parents. I still remember my son's first day of kindergarten. Um, and so um, so I just think it's a really nice way to transition. Just to kind of really take that little piece away because it's nerve-wracking to think about, what am I gonna do in the cafeteria? What's my classroom look like? So, um, anyway, so that's lovely and that's free to all the kindergarten students who ever wants to do it. And um, and then we do have some students from um, our Metco program who do want to participate. So um, we are working on all that with Nolan and our transportation coordinator to, and uh, Mrs. Kim, Carl, so we can see what we can coordinate so we can figure out ways for students to be able to access our summer probe offerings that we have at school from Boston, so.
Great. Uh, open floor for committee members. Any questions for Dr. Collins on academic updates? Hearing none. We'll move on to the Cohasset High School Handbook and School Improvement Plan by Mr. Brian Scott.
Wonderful. I invite Mr. Scott and Mr. Nice to come on up. And um, let me just say, what a wonderful team. And let me just say what a wonderful team these two individuals are, uh, leading our high school and I can say the same for Principal Mills and Ms. House is not here, but really proud of the work they do together and the the way they sort of work together, but also take on different aspects of their school. So welcome to both of you. And I will now share my screen. So as just as we did with the there we go. There we go. Just as we did when we presented the handbooks and school improvement plans with our elementary principals. We started with a bit of a data trend in terms of what kind of information that there there have been, there are searched out through surveys. And we were doing the same with our high school and middle school. So Scott.
So I like Mr. Noize actually start with the handbook. It's relatively straightforward. I just kind of went through and buttoned up anticipating we'd have a little more structures next year is hopefully COVID behind us. So a lot of turnover.
Sure. So we have five bullet points that we really made some minor changes. And then probably the biggest one would be our attendance and tardy policy that we'll look at. So the first one is we removed the HIV and AIDS policy in the handbook as there is no medical research that shows that truly needs to be in there. It's people are not reporting HIV and AIDS anymore in the sense of disclosure to, you know, the school. They don't have to do that. So we felt that that was, you know, we'll handle any medical precautions with any type of bodily fluid incidents in the gym. If a kid gets a bloody nose or in the lunchroom, if something happens, it would just all be handled the same way in a medical procedure. And then the updated attendance procedures really focusing in on obviously from COVID, we've had such a transition period. And again, really trying to reel the kids back in and the parents to making sure that it's a partnership, working towards making people realize that the classroom experiences can't be replicated when they're not here in school. And daily attendance and being on time, the tardy piece is a partnership between the parent and the student with support from administration and the teachers. So really focusing in on that piece through the the writing of the procedures. And there will continue to be letters home as a state policy for five unexcused absences. And then a letter at 10:00 for the parents will receive another letter and then at 10:00 now we'll ask them to come in for a meeting with myself or Mr. Scott, just to kind of figure out what's going on and why so many unexcused absences. The second one is just revising the tardiness escalation procedure. In the past handbook, it was a running tardy policy for the whole year. It never reset. So now we figure that we can get a better handle on tardiness if it is by term. So every student after two tardies will then have a morning meeting with me. On the fourth tardy, there will be assigned a lunch utility detention to work with some restorative justice pieces about ownership and responsibilities. And that would be an hour long in the office with myself or a staff member. And then it will go to six tardies within the term. So after the sixth tardy, it would be an hour morning detention with me. So it's like a meeting first. Let's have a conversation. Why are these things happening? What can we do to improve? And then a lunch utility detention to kind of what I started using was the book Highly Effective Teenagers. And so I have the student kind of read the chapter. Let's discuss, you know, time management. And sometimes our kids get stuck because their older brother or sister drives. So then they have to, you know, unfortunately, but that's where the partnership needs to happen with the parents and and teachers and administration as well. So we can work on that together. If we do, if they do hit the sixth tardy, then it would be considered an unexcused absence for that particular class that they are missing on that day. So we want to try to really reinforce that piece as well. Again, because of respect for the teacher, a lot of times we have kids that just chronically come in three and four minutes late. We do ask the kids to be in this in the building at 8:10. When our first bell rings at 8:13, they really should be in their classes or at least by the door of their classes. And then at 8:15, ready to learn so that that teacher can start their class and not have multiple interruptions. So that's our goal moving forward. After the term is over, we would reset and then the students would have another chance to start all over again and work at a at a better pace with commit to school.
My apologies. There is a memo in there that that summarizes that I just wasn't able to call it up.
And we also are trying to incorporate more restorative justice practices, which is community service based. So if there was graffiti in the bathrooms or something like that, we would ask the students as part of that lunch utility program to come in and clean, help clean a certain part of the school. This year I had the some students go and take care of the sports trophy cases. And they had to come in and kind of dust it and wash the windows down and just to kind of give back to having pride in their building so that they don't want to write things on the wall or in the bathrooms. I use the book also, as I said, for that. With bullying, we often will try to use some sort of a group discussion on how does it feel? Have kids write either an apology letter to the student. Also talking about, you know, coping skills of when someone does do that and just open and communication and and building confidence in kids to talk about what's actually happening, whether it's social media or, you know, in person in school. Oh, and then the last piece was we added a record release procedure for graduating students that we did not have in there.
Corrections. Any questions, Chairman Dial?
Mr. Carr?
The record release and what's the changes from lunch here to?
We're just publishing it. We're giving certain file.
Yeah, we just commenting on the handbook. And the as far as the may, you know, the focus on that. How much is the parent's fault and how do we bring the parents involved? I gotta know. I gotta tell you to be honest with you. And when my kids were in Deer Hill, I looked over and it was like 14 tardies on there. This is crazy. You gotta sit down. And I just said to my kids, I said, listen, you're over there, you're over there and you're over there when we're trying to get ready. And my wife and I are arguing over you guys. This is crazy. So we actually said prayer over it and we just said, look, you know, and we were never late after that. I mean, we do have our issues here and there, but you know, we took it on as a family. So like I I just, I just don't want to, I just don't, I I it makes me nervous that this kid is dealing with parents that just late all the time.
Every case is different.
Yes.
Biggest concerns that we have are around school refusal within that piece, which has definitely escalated since COVID across the country, not just for us. The goal of all of our, that's, you know, let's put it in context, that's 3%, 5%. Interactions, maybe.
Yeah.
It's the other 95% that it some of it comes down to whether or not you value it and how much you really want to fight the battle and push it. So you know, there are students who come in late all the time because they don't get up early enough.
Right.
There are kids whose brother or sister drive them in. Those kids are on time. The brother and sister doesn't get up or the parents are running late for work. You know, there's all kinds of different situations. So the goal really is to make sure we identify, inform people, have a conversation and work with folks to try to figure out what we can do to solve the problem.
Right.
And especially in COVID, you know, I've had parents tell me everything was just so crazy between working at home, everybody trying to do this and whatever. I I just lost the structures. So this year really is going to be about getting some of that structure back because it's important, you know, and I I think we've for real reasons, kind of gotten away from, you have to come to school consistently. You have, you know, because if you got sniffles, if you got red eyes or everyone was like, stay home, right? We gotta get over that and and get back to that. It's important to be in school.
And to be on time.
Yeah.
And to be honest with you too, it shows respect. If you're late, you just either you don't care or you don't respect, right? So those are the things too. And honestly, I I know I I employ a lot of people. If you show up late, don't even just 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 go.
And that's the number one thing when I do meet with the students, like this is your job.
Right.
If you were late
Right.
five times, you probably wouldn't have a job, right?
Absolutely.
And of course, they're like, well, if I work from home.
I think it, I had a life coach actually, you know, be living in Cohasset. You always think you can get to handle it in 20 minutes. You're like, I'll be there in 20 minutes. So every I've been, I was late for everything and people would be like annoyed with me. I'm 10 minutes late and I'm like, but it only takes me 20 minutes from Cohasset. But what we don't realize is it takes 10 minutes to get to the car because it's five minutes to get to these. It's three minutes to do this too. So my life coach is like, it's a half an hour. So I I would just say, you know, try to use some of that to that because it's, I I think it's again, it identifies if you want to be here. You know, we go, when I see somebody, I went to an auction, a real estate auction and the guy who bought it, I said to the auctioneer, who was the first guy here? Guy who bought it.
Yep.
And it's like, you know, you're just a buck and a half shopping.
I say this all the time. There's no car in the pocket at 8:00. At 8:15.
Right. Well, indirectly we're trying to, we're trying to teach responsibility, you know, so we're. Maybe we do an on time award, but someone who's there, it's 10 minutes late every day.
I do do a ten, a perfect attendance breakfast.
Oh, you do? I can't see, I'd never. You gotta show up late for that.
Mr. Robins.
Thank you both. Um, thank you, Principal Noize for your attention. I just quickly. And when I'm gonna, I don't wanna retool this year, but just for the future, like maybe it's a consideration and and maybe it's not the right suggestion, but just just my thought in in the in the progressive discipline or discipline section. As you know, that can become important at certain points as people are are as disciplined as being, you know, imposed on someone, their parents become involved and are happy with that. It may make sense. So I I like how you sort of discuss the concept of the progressive discipline and procedure and how we approach it. It's really good. Then level one offenses is subheading and it sort of talks more about like the level one procedure. Like I I like that you talk, okay, so level one is, you know, intervention occurs in the classroom. Is there like basically minor offenses that we can, you know, you know, address at this low level, the faculty level usually sort of direct one on one. And then and you say up here, their general guideline is not, you know, an exhaustive list. So I think you should probably change like types of level one offenses, types of levels or two examples of. And then after the description of the procedure, then say examples of level one offenses and examples of level one, you know, disciplinary measures. And then you go to level two, level two, that is just one sentence saying students can exhibit behavioral problems after level one interventions basically. Well, it's not only that, it would be that plus some more severe you know, infractions, right? But and so you can talk about what kinds of things would happen in level two and you do that in level three, you go back to doing that again, which is good, you know, sometimes the police are involved, school psychology, things like that. So just, I mean, you are just as capable as I am. I'm just pointing that out. I think it would be maybe a a little bit more intuitive.
Yeah, I mean, the more you strike cloud with people, that's really what we're going.
That's what I'm talking about. Yeah.
And nobody reads the handbook unless they violate the handbook.
Exactly. Exactly. And that's why I always go to that section. It's just, I I just think if you can be more clear, so it's less ambiguous or at least less the imagination or interpretation rather is really a good word. And and sort of really lay out the procedures. So people, everyone's clear on it and expectations are managed from the outset.
It's kind of a fine line between you need concrete examples. Again, you want a lot of latitude.
Sure.
For context.
Agreed.
Some of that is based on experience.
Oh, yeah. You're doing a good job though. You do a good job saying this is not an exhaustive list, but then like just make sure that when you say types of offenses, it is clearly, you know, it's like, I I don't know. So.
Right.
I'm just the suggestions I was reading.
Quick clarifying question, Mr. Carr. Are you suggesting these changes for this cycle? Are you?
Nope, nope. I'm I'm suggesting that Principal Scott and Assistant Principal Noize just take that consideration for the next time. I don't think this is like any major problem. I'm not looking to have them rehash this at this point.
I think it's a really good suggestion to standardize all of them.
And what's driving towards is perhaps this is something to be taken up by our policies of committee. I know there's reference to the school committee policy binder here and I wonder if this is some language that we might be able to tweak.
So it's it's different from school committee policy. I I I believe. I think this is more of a building operational.
It's actually, remember, handbooks can only be adapted by school councils. So it goes through school council. It doesn't go. So so it's the school council discussion that would draw that or it's anything we do.
But I'm wondering for feedback, not necessarily for specific. Because you have, I guess what I'm saying is I actually very much like the language comments. I mean, some mind edits might be helpful. Just trying to put some structure on it.
I mean, I I think I so first of all, I like the unit. The thing I do like is that we're seeing the uniformity between all these handbooks now. Obviously, the secondary schools are a little bit different from the elementary schools, but the elementary schools are reflective of one another, one another now. Secondary schools using middle school as a secondary school here at like they're reflecting. So that's good. And I agree with having a uniformity or someone just said, I thought it was you, but but yes, uniformity in the disciplinary procedures overall. Again, there's going to be some differences just based on the development level of the kids in the building, but I I just, I don't, I look, I feel like the reason I'm saying maybe for next year is just because you know, we can certainly work with what's here now and I just feel like a lot of work goes into that and it's like, we're gonna be, it's gonna work to our detriment. Like, we're not gonna be able to like get going here. So like, maybe we just for next year consider that. And I I just have complete faith in our building principal, our building leaders, principals, assistants, principals, that they'll be able to do that. I just want to just mention it as like a something to throw out there. I don't know. I I don't know. I that's I'm just bringing it up as a suggestion for next year. I'm not looking to change it now.
Yep. Ms. Allen?
I know it's great. Also, there is a policy related to what you're talking about, but it's substantially separate from handbook development. So we will touch upon that at the subcommittee, but in a different context.
Great. So I I don't I don't have much. I am in the in the prior, the the Deer Hill policy and the Osgood policy, I noticed the snack list had, there's no snack. I'm kidding.
Thanks for letting us bring goldfish to the market.
I I do want to build on that. One quick comment from from Mr. Kearney. On the on the on the tardiness, you mentioned each case is 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 unique. When you have those unique cases where, you know, it's it's a sibling that drives to school or, you know, and and if you come saying, you know, it's a regular thing that, you know, it's it's almost structural, like this is the way you know, my, you know, parents have to get the boat or bus at this time and so on. How do you, how do you deal with those structural ones? Is there like a just general excuse process or?
Well, I mean, we try to work with the families as closely as we can to identify what the block is and whether or not we can help. I mean, it's it's hard to fault child or something that's not within the child's control. At the same time, at some point you need to get to school. So if that means you get to take a bus, then we can take a bus, you know, or come up with some kind of alternatives.
Great. So I have I have no questions for the rest of the handbook. I think the next phase of this is the school improvement plan. I'll note on the agenda, we have marked this with an asterisk. There will be a committee action required, but we'll book it, the handbook and the improvement plan together.
So go through just a little bit of background data going back to 2019. We do two alternating surveys and we've done a couple of focus groups in addition to that. One is always on school climate and culture. And the other is on student wellness, which we do in collaboration with Safe Harbor. Those surveys have varied a little bit over time. One, because the climate and culture survey that we used to use kind of folded during COVID and went into using that over. And so it's not always apples to apples comparison, but it is close enough that we can kind of see some trends. And the biggest areas of concern that we had back in February of 2018 were physical and and social emotional security for students, perceived or real bullying, trust, communication, inclusion, we were starting to kind of unpack there. We did that over time. And then we had some pretty serious student wellness issues. And again, this goes back to why we initially implemented the wellness. And then we had some pretty serious student wellness issues. And again, this goes back to why we initially implemented the, um, wellness class and kind of expanded it from, from just PPE. Vaping was spiking at the time. Uh, we had a spike in kind of depression and suicidal ideation. And, and student stress. Sorry, it's sometimes tough to read. So those are the kind of biggest things that we were focusing on going into the 2019, 2020. Obviously the backend of 2020, we got into, um, COVID. But we continue to kind of monitor students and implement, uh, programming to try to alleviate some of these things. The most recent, if you want to flash forward, Dr. Sullivan. The most recent, um, trends have actually turned the corner on some of our biggest weaknesses. So for example, if we go to the next one.
Okay.
Correct? So in the most recent school climate inventory that we did in February or March, I can't remember. I think it was in February. The biggest strengths were safety, physical security, social supports for students, communication and trust and jumped up tremendously. So. Um, we surveyed students, we surveyed parents, faculty members, we did some focus group work. Uh, in a couple of different ways, we did affinity groups in one series and we did, um, kind of more inclusive. Focus groups in another. And we're trending in the right direction. So effective communication was up. Thirty-nine percent. Respect for cultural diversity was up. Among black students, it was, it was reported as. You know, over 90% that the school was in favor of it. It doesn't mean that we're there yet, but it means that we're moving in the right direction. And the students, two self-identified strengths from the parent survey were empathy and trust, which. From my perspective, gives us a great strength-based approach to kind of dealing with some of the other things. We still have a lot of challenges and this comes out really consistently. And there was an April 29 newsletter that I put out that had all of the full reports, um, and folks are welcome to kind of consistently reference that. It slices and dices a million different ways. There was a lot of information in there, but the students continue to report that. There's, there's some real insecurity. Social media definitely contributes to it. Um, they, they have, and some of this is a function of the size of the school. There's real insecurity among friend groups and between friend groups. So. Groups that are exclusive or groups of friends that sit at the same lunch table and are exclusive to each other. Uh, and once you're out of the circle, you don't get back into the circle. They'll report that this goes back all the way into elementary schools when, um, some of the friend groups are socially engineered by parents for other reasons. You know, then, then people want to kind of hang out in the same social circles and they're really articulate and really aware of, of how those things kind of. Impact them. So that, the, the relationship piece is, is a huge piece. And the other is this kind of implicit and explicit messages about what success looks like. And it is grade-driven, superficial, um, you know, Ivy League school. It includes a wealth component, um. And it's, it's just not authentic. And so we see a lot of kids who will report high academic motivation, which means I want the best grades possible, low earning interest, learning interest. I don't really care what I'm studying. And so we have kids who will, you know, try to manipulate the systems that they can have more, um, AP classes, they get more GPA points. At the expense of taking something that they might actually be really interested in. Um, some of it is disproportionate to what their. Image of like a prior sibling would have gone through. So we've had more than one student who said, well, you know, my older sister took four APs, so I need to take four APs. And the old sister will say, I took one AP and it was just okay, right? Um, so we really need to do a, a, a much better job of challenging that and building in more authentic learning opportunities. And showing kids why that's so important. Personally, for their own stress levels, for their own growth, and yes, for, you know, future success. Um, because the stuff that they're driving after doesn't line up with success. It, what it lines up with is extreme student stress in college. And the bubbles can burst at some point if we can't get our arms around it. Um, it's not unique to us. We're seeing it in college as we see, you know, places like Stanford and Harvard and MIT. Uh, and the suicidal ideation that those students have, feeling of never being good enough and having to climb another mountain. And it's just not, uh, it's just not healthy. And at the same time, some of it is the system. So you have to kind of acknowledge that there is an element that praises the transcript. And, and the points and the accolades and all that stuff. So, you know, really working with, um, students and families. So that people are all kind of talking the same language and it's not, you know, us telling them or the parents telling them or, you know, their peers telling them. Um, that, you know, we're really starting this kind of collective conversation around, um, how, how to. How to make what we're doing much more authentic. And some of the things like the environmental science courses and the partnership with CRI. You know, I'll put out a, a newsletter on Friday that's gonna talk about a lot of the really meaningful learning experiences that the students had. In a couple of, the last couple of weeks, not the least of which is the work with the elementary schools where they're going down and they're writing books with them and they're telling stories. They're participating in Snapper Sneaker Day and they're teaching kids about diversity. And it's stuff that they can get behind and, and feel like they've made a difference in a way that. In August, when we get the AP scores and someone gets a five, it's like, oh, what's that mean? It means you did really well in the course. Great. Um, you know, but there's, there's a lot of, you know, there's a place for that stuff, but it isn't the end-all and be-all. And when it becomes the end-all and be-all, we see huge increases in cheating and, um. You know, kind of byproducts of that stuff, even, you know, when we try to entertain conversations, um, like in this Humphreys class, for example. She kind of posited the question to the students, she said, well, what if everyone got a hundred? And the student said, well, that's not fair. And she said, but what if everyone over time actually mastered a hundred percent of the, the information? And they said, but that's not fair. I got it faster. Right? So this kind of like internal competition, um, to be better than someone else is, is, you know, really, uh, one of our biggest challenges. And then there are some byproducts of that, which, you know, we understand the cultural survey and then we understand kind of the maladaptive behaviors. And so while we are seeing a lot of real progress, lower rates of depression, um. Students kind of reported less stress and more sleep during COVID. And now we're kind of turning the corner and getting back the other way. Same with vaping. Uh, the vaping went way down and now it's kind of picking back up a little bit, uh, not to the level it was before by any means, but it's still certainly there. And then we've seen decreases in alcohol and marijuana, which is phenomenal. But really only with the male population. With our female population, they're at least con- constant with what they were before. And that's a subgroup that I really want to kind of focus on as well because, um, they seem to be struggling as a subgroup more so than the boys with some of the maladaptive behaviors. Uh, and some of the self-confidence and insecurity, um, and so we're trying to unpack that a little bit more. So that leads us to some of the school improvement plan. Um, go to the next one. And it kind of falls into three buckets. Um, one is kind of the student engagement and personalized learning. So our civics projects, our community partnerships with Polly Hill, Save Harbor, CSCI. We want to implement things like student art portfolios and promote things like the seal of bilinguality, which is a foreign language, um. Certificate, if, if you master so much language. So different, different types of things that are gonna really kind of make students. Unique and engage them in, in some meaningful learning opportunities that other schools may not have. It's gonna make them hopefully stand out. We need to get back to kind of a student skill building and operational consistency. So when we're going between the gym, the calf, and a little outside and wherever, you know, students like routine, it provides a certain sense of safety. You get up, you brush your teeth, you take a shower, you get dressed, you don't have, nobody ever says like, I'm gonna mix it up just to see what happens, right? People like kind of routine things. And so us getting back into some of that routine and teaching kids what it means to be in high school. Which is one thing we really found out about three quarters of the way through the year. They have no idea what high school learning looks like. They aren't even really sure what middle school learning looks like. So to come in and, and, you know, our teachers and administrators have these expectations that of course you should come in with this kind of skill set. Uh, they did not have it. And so kind of rebuilding that, you know, what does high school look like? What does independent learning look like? So when you're not in school, what does it look like when you're home? Uh, and then what does authentic learning look like? You know, when you're in, in grades 11, 12, when your schedule frees up and you have the opportunity to do some unique things. What does that mean? Uh, and how are you gonna do that? And then all the stuff that Brian Torren talked about, the relationship building. So. Um, you know, we put a student leadership class in to hopefully get a mentoring program and, and some real authentic connections. Uh, to have our older students working with our younger students. They use Project Adventure and One Love and all the things that, that Brian Torren kind of touched on. And then from an administrative and a guidance perspective, really doing some community outreach, doing some parent workshops, doing some podcasts. Recognizing a broader array of student achievements, um. Communicating with parents what the expectations are and why we're setting those expectations and what skills we're trying to enforce and how they might be able to reinforce those at home. So what is, you know, what does homework look like for a ninth grader? How, how much should it be? How do you organize that person? How would you check that it's done? Um, if you have any questions, what's the proper chain of command to, you know, kind of discuss those things? All of that stuff kind of goes into the, the school improvement plan. And what we realized when we went through it as a council was that our goals from this current year didn't really change. We're just in kind of evolution 2.0. So we're gonna continue to work on, uh, and you can blast forward to the, to the goals. The student learning experience and, and overall student wellness by looking at those things that were on the prior slide. We're gonna try to do things that cultivate, uh, more relationships between students and among staff. That build community, that, that built their own identity and not this kind of tight-cast identity of what they think. A successful kid from Cohasset is supposed to look like. And then continue to try to empower staff and students to promote equity, cultural responsiveness, inclusivity. Uh, moving kind of from the professional development piece to, uh, incorporating some of that into curriculum and some of the other, uh, kind of. More on the ground approaches to, you know, what does that look like in the classroom? What does it look like in your instructional methods? What does it look like in the books that you're reading, the, um, activities that you're doing, that type of stuff? So that's really where the, the school improvement is. Kind of in that evolution for next year.
I think that's it.
I think one of the big things that Brian said to hit home too was it really reared its head when we had our semi-formal dance. And we had ninth and 10th graders at the dance. That just kind of stood there and looked at each other because for two years they have not had. Any type of relationship building. And, you know, when it was all said and done, I said to Brian, I felt like we should have actually had to have organized, you know, whether it was. The cha-cha slide, like we had to teach the kids to how to have fun and, and build relationships. So. I, I reached out to John Mills and, and said, make sure when you have your eighth grade dance or sixth grade, that you have some sort of relationship building skills, but it. It was just like, it jumped at us so big and how much work, you know, we need to still continue to do with those, those relationships building pieces.
After I semi-formal though, when I told this noise, I said, don't worry about it. Like I'm sending her a, a whole grade of the answers and. They know how to have fun.
Uh, Mr. Carr, any questions, comments?
So I do, yeah, thank you. I think you guys do a great job on communicating with parents. But some of these data trends, I don't know how you could fit this more in. I mean, I, you, you gotta kind of tell parents, this is not gonna shock you a lot. About stuff you want them to ultimately catch up with, but this is very eye-opening information.
Yeah.
So to the extent that there's any resources we can give you to help you do better with that or whatever, or differently. But the more you tell parents that kind of stuff, that is gonna go a long way, especially at home and it will only resonate here. So.
Yep.
Good for you to recognize.
Mr. Carey?
Well, I do have a question from a constituent, um, in regards to. Uh, which is that okay to read for the record?
It's your turn.
Okay. Well, I have my own. Sorry.
This is not one of his three comments.
Let's be clear. Uh, this comes from Danny Iadoli from, um, A Short Street, Cohasset, Mass. He just asked, it's a simple question. Do we have any personal finance education classes agenda at school? If not, are we planning on having?
So we do have a, um, finance class. We have two sections of it, uh, right now. It's in elective, so kids aren't required to.
What grade?
It's typically junior class.
Okay.
Most of the core mats go through sophomore year and then juniors and seniors would take personal finance. Um, there's a demand for kids, from kids, and well, we've been talking about this as faculty on. Kind of basic things like that, like how to fill out a check.
Right.
Um.
Balance check.
Yeah, I mean, if, if that exists anymore, right?
Yeah.
Or how to address an envelope, how to address an email. You know, like really kind of basic, like you need a greeting, not just, you know. You need to use capitals, that type of thing. But it's just such a different world that they're using when they're, you know, scrolling through everything, um, and that's, that's kind of what they reproduce to you. Uh, and they don't, I don't know that they recognize that it results, sometimes it's disrespect.
And then there's also a learning account that we talked about bringing back where the business is set up for the day. We have all the.
Credit for life.
Yeah.
So that's gonna happen. Yeah, we're gonna need a grade to do that this year.
Yeah.
We're looking at, uh, February or March.
Mm-hmm. The only thing, uh, and I got a couple of questions. The only thing that just, just kind of disappoints me with this is that, uh, we didn't get a parent survey. I wasn't asked. I, you know, I searched all my emails and I couldn't find it. So I, I don't know where it is and I don't know the result.
Trace is involved.
No, I, I had her go through it. And I, I, you know, I looked for the high school and middle school and I didn't see one because I know in the, in the, um, middle, I'm sorry, the, uh, elementary schools, we had one. How many participants? What was the question? So.
So that's perhaps, um, a criticism directed at me. I, I asked them to give us data and I think what Principal Scott did is he just, he had so many data points. That he gave us a summary of these data points, which I, you know, I, in, in the future, if that's something. By the way, this is just, this is about handbooks and school improvement plans. I was the one who said, I really want you to do a, a survey or get some data from the community that shows how we're doing and. We, but if we wanted to make it a particular format, that's something I can make sure we do next time.
Yeah.
Because really, I think Principal Scott and Assistant Principal Noise are just doing what I asked them to do. So I'll take that one.
Yeah, which is fine. I just, I do want to hear from the parents because I just think it's kind of like, yeah, I'm not surprised because like. I feel like in, to be honest with you guys, you, I mean, you have children in elementary school. I just feel like as a parent in high school, middle school, it's like, you know, we don't really get asked anything. There's really isn't any parent participation. Uh, and, and I can see that by not having a survey because some of the things that, what, what we could have asked would be, you know, do you think this, it'd be a good chance to have a wellness day? We talked about wellness day and this is not something I'm making up. There's, there's talk and talk in public school and there's a, there's actually a bill out there that a child can say, I need a wellness day. And not make up a sick day so they can actually take a wellness day. So these are, these, these are the things that, those are the questions that I would like to ask the parents, like, how's the food? Um, how's this? How's this? So like, honestly, like, I can't even vote on this tonight. And unless I see what the parents have to say because.
And so I would point you to the April 29 newsletter because it has the, so there's two surveys. There's a CSCI survey, which has a student, faculty and parent component. With the published results in the newsletter, you can actually download, download the entire report.
Okay.
And then I would point you to the focus group work that Carla Puglisi did.
Okay.
And in the back of that report are straight comments from parents.
They also had qualitative, um, focus groups too, the parents. So again, I, I think that, I, I like what you're saying, Paul. I think that that maybe is because this is new for us, something that I wanted to do in conjunction with our. We wanted to do, it was conjunction with our strategic plan. Maybe we can be a little bit more specific. I do want to note one thing though, that is impressive to me is we're really moving more from a communication format to more of community engagement and family engagement. Some of the things that were mentioned on this, the parent, um, workshops, for instance. That's, it's a very, much deeper level of engagement where it's, it's back and forth. So that you're trying to, as Mr. Garcia said, explore those feelings from families. And explore what we're seeing with kids, with families and get that back and forth in an engagement format, which I think is really deeply important. So I, I, I know it's sort of a little bit, um, a, a, a side from what you're asking because you want more, you know, what are the families feeling? But I think that back and forth is really where we are in this district. Um, and it will bring us to a much deeper place, but your point's very well taken by me.
Yeah, well, thank you for that. And, but I do, I do want to say that as a parent in middle school, it's just a different environment. And, and the moment Mr. Clark is tense to that because, and, and you guys really don't know because your kids are in elementary school. I'm gonna tell you, once they get to middle school, it's a different experience. I'm going to tell you, once they get to middle school, it's a different experience and it's less parent involvement. And, and, and I'm not going to bring this up with you and bring it up more in the middle school. Is, is there really isn't, because it's a new school, it just doesn't seem like there's a lot of. It doesn't, it just seems like the parents are kind of, they feel like they're locked up. You know, we're given one hour to try to meet the teachers, right? And like quick, get in, get out. And then this is kind of like, whoa, like, I feel like we need to get parents more, they need to be more of a stockholder. Because like, you know, questions would be asked, you know, do you like the school? Does your kid like the school? I'd love to know if my, if the community actually likes us. You know, these are the questions that I think that we got to ask. And the other thing is the student survey. Let's hear from the students being in the high school, if they like their teacher or not. Because a lot of them are going to be really honest with you guys. And, and, you know, they're smart kids. They know what's going on. They know that, you know, and I'm going to put this out there, they know we have a math issue in our town. And we have a math problem. And as studies have showed, Emma Cass' test are gone. So like, I don't understand because like, I would be screaming about a math specialist. Like if we see the data, it shows that we have a particular problem in math, then I, you know, we should be all talking about a math specialist right? You wouldn't, I think we all agree that we need a math specialist at high school, right?
I do want to focus on the plan.
No, I get that. But what I'm trying to say is you're not going to hear that, like, the parents in this town will tell you that we have a math problem. Okay, we have a math problem, right? There's no, they can't tell us right now, but in a survey, they could have wrote, have a math problem. Because we have a math problem. So you're not going to find out if you don't ask the parents. I'm done. That's it. I just, I'm very disappointed that we didn't see a survey because a lot of parents have a lot to say and they feel like they're not being listened to. And I hear it.
Mr. Carr?
Thanks, and I think that's why everyone, I think that's why the middle high school parents really value your participation. Maybe Paul, I hear that all the time and I think it's good to hear your voice a lot, they say. But I just, I know it's a continuation of the work, like you said, it's 2.0. But I do think that they're really responsive and pertinent goals. I really like the three goals. And the first one, I can't help but think about as you were sort of discussing the the sort of data behind it that drove it, that concept of creating a personalized path to success. I keep on thinking about the class of 21s of valedictorian speech message she was sending, which was, I think it was Ms. Cunningham, right? That was talking about like what success truly is and how to realize that and sort of capture that and not, and not let it escape you in, you know, in your quest for perfection. So it was like sort of pertinent to that, to that goal. I thought, I just couldn't help thinking about that repeatedly when you were talking about the challenges that we're facing.
Yeah, it continues to come up.
Good to see some self-realization there amongst the students though.
Yeah.
Anyway, I had no real critique, questions?
Sal?
Their goals, I love how much my school is involved in the other schools. My kids recognize it all the time and come back and report about it when the big kids are around. It's really exciting. And I just think even out in the community, it's so nice because what they're learning at school isn't just about what they do at school. It's what, you know, when they're on the soccer field or helping with tennis or coaching or rec camp or just in the street passing you on a bike. I just feel like really, really great kids coming out of high school. And, and that, I mean, we're hearing it in valedictorian speeches, like, you know, you're not just the number and like what you're saying, like, you know, balancing APs and work life. That message is coming, you know, next time I hear it in their voice. And I think these goals match up with what's happening.
I have one, one question. I like, I do like the goals. I like how they're responsive to the information that you gathered. One question that resonated with me, and I love this, I love this focus on definition of success and trying to get authentic learning. Because that, that they're, my high school experience was filled with people who were after those AP scores, looking for the easiest course so they could get that perceived path to success. And, you know, one way, I don't know what the solution is to that. But what I worry about is that, you know, we don't, we don't want to dilute it in such a way that it also minimizes honest academic achievement as well. So we want to make sure we celebrate academic achievement without emphasizing that that is the only path. So I guess, have you thought about how to balance that? Because, you know, we obviously celebrate, you know, athletic achievement, MAs and competitions. But have you thought about how to balance those two? And it seems to be almost competing goals. You don't want to say, hey, I already need to be the smartest person with the straight As. But at the same time, you don't want to, you know, discourage people or, or, you know, not recognize, you know, bona fide achievement.
Yeah, I don't see that as the problem. I, I don't think that we have to take away from one in order to do the other. You know, one of the comments that I get a lot is that the school over emphasizes athletic achievement as opposed to anything else. And I would challenge that. And I would point to any newsletter that I have that does include some athletic success, but that's not typically the focus of, of my communications. But the, the town culture is a very athletic heavy town. And they have, you know, every team has a booster organization that has a Twitter account, that has a fundraising mechanism that pushes stuff out. And yes, a lot of the local photographers kind of celebrate that. So that's what's in the ledger, that's what's in, you know, the anchor and all that stuff. And, and that's a good thing. I don't want to necessarily take away from that. What I think we need to do a bad job of, and we've started to kind of pull a little bit of it together this year with, with some of our independent learning opportunities, is pushing that stuff out in more public forums. So CSCR has done a great state of the harbor for as many years as I've been here. It doesn't get a lot of press. And I did have one parent reach out earlier in the year and she said, you know, I would love to actually kind of be your press agent and push some of this stuff out. And then I think life got in the way and it never quite happened. But, you know, we were talking this morning about this partnership with CSCR where, you know, we'll have kids collect data in the summer about egress, about water quality, about whatever. Bring it back into the curriculum, have our environmental or our marine science forces actually process that, come up with the driving questions, further the research and then publish a conditions report based on NOAA's condition support that they would publish on the state of the harbor and see if we can get that out, you know? So doing things like that. We've had kids publish books, you know, create drones. Make movies, right? So, you know, some of what I'm trying to push out is the last newsletter of the year on Friday is just that. It's, it's kind of authentic student learning artifacts. And I would love to have some kind of showcase at the end of the year where either we, you know, remotely publish them or we put them in here and have some kind of community.
Set our strategic plan too, that's the next step.
You know, which is not there yet, but.
That's a, you know, showcase like that, you know, can I just put a deer alert? You know, a showcase like that where you have, you know, student, you know, creations, studies. That's, that's, that's an excellent idea. You can balance those things, so.
I mean, just looking outside at our courtyard, that, you know, we're going to have a greenhouse here. Our kids have put so much time and effort into maintaining these vegetables and herbs. And, I mean, they become so passionate about it and so proud of it. And then they take it to the farmer's market and display what they're doing. So that alone, I mean, it's just, it's huge.
And I think, you know, getting, this is where we could actually use a little more parent involvement. And I don't know if the PSO or if it's us, if it's the vehicle, but getting people who are successful in, who didn't necessarily have, you know, 5.0 and go to Harvard and follow that path, which is. You know, because my experience and I think a lot of other people, it kind of goes a little bit all over the place and they land on something they're satisfied with, right? So, you know, having more of those conversations and highlighting more of those community resources, I think would go a long way too. Because the kids, they need to trust and the parents need to trust. Because the hardest thing about straying from that quantitative all A's, 5.0, AP classes is that you don't really want to gamble with your own kids, right? Even though like, it's a better gamble, you know?
Any further comments, questions, McPenny?
Can I ask a timing question? Because I, I did read the data on those reports and I want to make sure Paul has time to. Is there any reason, could we vote on this at the August thing or is there a timing issue? I just want to make sure you have time to read what you want. It would be like a July meeting, sorry. See him jump in all of a sudden?
You could certainly, you could certainly vote on it.
I just want to make sure you get it, I found it to be helpful, I found it to be very helpful, the information in the data. Just want to make sure you have all the. Yeah, and, and thank you for that because I really don't. And I would like to kind of postpone this until, I mean, they don't have to be here for the vote, right?
They do not have to be here for the vote.
I mean, I, I really would, really want to hear from the parents. I just, I just think it's an opportunity to hear from the parents. And, you know, I don't know if Dr. Sullivan can send out a survey and then we can.
Oh, I guess my, my only pushback is if we did. There's student surveys, there's faculty surveys, there's parent surveys, there's parent focus groups. If people didn't read them, that's really.
But that's on me, so. Why don't I suck it up and say, listen, I'm at fault, I didn't get to put this information and I would.
Scott, Brett, Chris, and Kenny and I talked a little bit before the meeting. Maybe you can talk about a little bit of how you incorporated any parent feedback in developing your, your strategic plan here. Because it sounds like you got data and feedback and so maybe that would adjust Mr. Trenan's.
Sure, so the two primary points of contact were the focus groups that we did with the parents and then the culture survey that we did in February. And both of those sets of data went into kind of collective set, which was mostly student data, faculty feedback, other focus group feedback that we done with some of the consultants. But, you know, I don't have the issue if people postponed it. If we have to send out another survey, if we don't like the surveys that were done, my only issue is that we can't continue to say that we didn't do them.
No, no, I guess we did, yeah. And I just didn't have a chance to read it. You know, I have kids in the school and I didn't say.
Well, I, I also think.
If it's on a newsletter, that's a little different because like, you know, we don't have what we have that the, that the elementary principals came in and that's, do you like your school? Do you have, and we don't have that data.
Mr. Kenny's talking about a survey that was sent out to the building parents in an email.
Right, so, that's what I'm talking about. Like, why don't we have that here?
In the link that I forwarded.
So, so I don't want to.
We don't have any of the numbers, so how many people participated?
So, so, but that's, that's what I'm talking about.
So, so I guess maybe we'll, we'll close this off. I guess hearing, I would, I would entertain a motion to approve, but I understand that there's, there's concerns about potentially getting more data, although I don't know what's going to change the handbook.
This, yeah, the school improvement plan is not dedicated, just so everybody knows. Like what we're really voting on here is the school improvement plan, which is created by the school council. It doesn't have anything to do with any survey data or engagement data. I asked for, I asked the principals to make sure that they got some engagement data so that we could present that. It was really an extra. But what I'm hearing from you loud and clear, and this is important because you're part of, a major part of the voice of the community, is that we need more questions being asked of at least high school, but potentially everywhere, to get more information to hear, to figure out where we are and where we stand. And I have no problem doing that moving forward. I guess the question is, does that dictate any of the content of the school improvement plan? Which it may have, but again, it's the school council who digesting all that and is creating the school improvement plan. So I don't want to mix.
Dr. Sullivan, just to remind everyone, what's the constituency of these school councils?
So school councils are an even proportion of parents, guardians. And that's one constituents. And then the other constituent is administration and teachers. And it evens out and they discuss these matters and they, they're really, their major functions are school improvement plans, handbooks and budget in particular as it relates to class sizes. That's what a school council does. So this addition of engagement information comes from, from me asking the principals to provide that. The format that we provided it in is slightly different. It isn't uniform and is not to be confused with the uniformity of our handbooks and improvement plans. So the fact that you may find some frustration that they're not the same is only because I didn't ask them to be the same because there's no, there's no format for that. I just knew, and I think I'm right, that you wanted to hear about what, what the community is thinking, what the data points are saying and then how the data drove these plans. And that's what we were attempting to provide. But moving forward, we could certainly provide it in a different format. But I, I don't think that has much to do with a school improvement plan. Traditionally, we've never presented survey data or data of any type when we presented school improvement plans. Because quite frankly, it isn't a necessary component of a school improvement plan. I think it's important and that's why I, I suggested that we do it as a team. So I just wanted you to understand that, that the, the uniformity is no failure of anybody's. It's just, it's, it's just an idea I had that I asked for. And I didn't provide a template for them to do that.
And Mr. Chipper, so there's also school committee member on the school council. We have input but no vote, so we have voice but no vote. And Mr. Kenny, the questions were asked, the parents, just that you didn't get it like the elementary school parents did. And that's just that, that, but they were asked. So Principal Scott has that information. And it just wasn't presented in the same manner as the two elementary school. And this kind of goes to like the uniformity I was talking about where the elementary school is sort of aligned and middle and high school is sort of aligned, just because of the sort of developmental differences. And, but I think that Principal Farrell and Principal Sullivan worked together on how they, how they did things and they, I think, derived their processes from their collaboration. I think we'll see probably some similarity between Principal Mills and Principal Scott, since Principal Noyes, since Assistant Principal Salas, who also worked together and collaborated on their improvement plan. But what I think the main takeaway here is, as a middle or high school parent, you would like to see those questions come into an email so you can take, you can participate in the survey because you didn't, you didn't get the, you didn't see the newsletter, you didn't participate in the newsletter. You think it'd be a better vehicle to get to you in the email. Is that sort of what you're saying? Because, because, because when I was hearing from Principal Scott, the, the survey went out. So, you know, so, so it's just the vehicle wasn't. And response were given and data was gathered. And that's what we heard, heard some of that.
And it was incorporated.
Exactly, so, exactly. So I think it's just the vehicle through which it wasn't effective for you. And I, I think that's the case for you, Mr. Kenny, that's probably the case for other people too. And that's not meant to be a criticism. I'm just, I sort of recognize the fact that I think it is important because Principal Scott's trying to point out that, that did happen. So it's not like it didn't happen. Just wanted to make that clear, but I, I think there is, there is merit.
Well, Tim, do you have a challenge or did you feel, you did feel? Wes was simply, he had a system that involved, he said, I didn't see the data. Right, there is data. If it doesn't disturb things, I think I'd be in favor of just wait until the next meeting. Just let all have a chance because when you vote on these things and what information you have as a member, it's great. If y'all want to vote, that's great too. No, I just wanted to bring it up that if you want to still take a look at something, you know?
Yeah, well, I don't want to, I don't want to hold things up if it's on me because I didn't get it, I've got a survey.
I think we should vote, I'm going to be honest. The issue that we are voting on is separate. And that's accepted.
Yeah, so, so I, I do want to keep to the agenda. So I will, I will entertain a motion. What I've done in advance is drafted up some proposed motions. So I'll just read out what I drafted here. We can change these, these are proposed, these are not moved by me. But this is language that one could use and could fall into the minutes. And I would entertain a motion resolved that the Cohasset High School Handbook and School Improvement Plan is hereby approved as presented to the Cohasset School Committee. So.
Second.
Alright, so it is moved by Mr. Cullen, seconded by Saint Ange. I will do a roll call vote. Mr. Carr? A vote in favors, a vote to approve the, the high school handbook and the school improvement.
Yeah. Scare proof.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye, guys.
Saint Ange?
Aye.
And Mr. Dial, yes? So that is.
Aye, of course aye, guys.
So five ayes and unanimously approved. So thank you very much. The, our school will implement the handbook and the school improvement plan.
Very good, thank you.
And I believe up next into the gauntlet is Principal Mills for the, for the Mills School.
It's right there.
Yeah. Hope you didn't have to fly to catch her, any Principal Scott.
You want to do first?
We'll do the handbook, just like they did.
Handbook first.
So similar to Assistant Principal Noyes and Principal Scott, I'll do the handbook first, that's alright? And similar to the high school handbook, there's nothing, I don't think very radically different. And similar to the high school handbook, there's nothing, I don't think, very radically different. A lot of the changes we're making to the handbook actually are just incorporating school community policy or in other ways, just trying to make what we're doing operationally, just have it reflected in the handbook. So just to walk through it, pages fifteen to sixteen is just sort of an update of general school information happens every time. Pages twenty-one and twenty-two, where we describe courses. A, I just want to insert the new course that we're offering next year, cutting robotics, just so that the information's accurate. B, where there's a section that describes how children are recommended in the course levels and include the language in diagnostic or screening data as well as standardized data. In other words, it's an additional data point, and that's onto the next page, Dr. Sullivan. The, it's just an additional data point that we're using to help evaluate the most appropriate academic level for kids and teachers are recommending for ELA or math accelerated courses in seventh and eighth grade. The cheating policy actually, page twenty-four contains language that's a little bit anachronistic. Last year, we had removed an introductory section that talked about the expectations for student learning at CMS. The high school also removed this section that was created years ago and sort of outlined expectations. Like, you know, a child who graduates would have this communication skill or that. It was language that nobody, it's really not incorporated. And I feel that the CPS mission and core values and vision statement actually represent what we do now. So I removed a reference to old language and just sort of incorporated the spirit of it by inserting a sentence that each student had developed a strong sense of honor integrity, behave ethically and act responsibly. So that's just a matter of updating some of the vernacular or some of the language. Page twenty-eight, we have a section describing lockers. We incorporated the school committee policy that exists, just reminding students that there is a right of inspection that's granted to the school committee, but also administrators. We don't search lockers. If we had to, we would, but we just wanted to incorporate, well, you know, the fact that when kids put things in lockers, just a reminder that, you know, it really is still school property. And there is, if there was an issue, we have a right to inspect. In the three years I've been here, we've never tried. I think maybe once had to inspect a school locker. The page thirty to thirty-two, some of the discipline stuff, it's just a matter of updating language. The chart that lists different offenses, cheating plagiarism was absent. So we included that so that it aligns with the academic integrity policy. There was some, on B now, we removed some offenses from, there were a holdover from when there was one handbook between the high school and middle school. But up until last, up until this year, unfortunately, kids could, our kids could commit driving infractions. So we removed that. I think if our kids are driving, it's more than an infraction. It's a bigger issue.
It's a level three.
It's a biggie, yeah. So, and they also referred to counseling and we just tried to clean up some of that language that wasn't redundant. We inserted, oh, we inserted just language as a level one offense, reminding kids that only water is allowed outside of the cafeteria unless that there was some special situation. And our kids, for the most part, just carry water, but just to keep the school clean. Dress code, we incorporated the school committee dress code as stated there. And once again, it supersedes any prior school policy. There was old language that had probably been created years ago. The attendance policy in page forty to forty-three. All we're doing is incorporating the school committee policy, much like the changes that Assistant Principal Noyes had outlined previously. And that's straight out of the school committee policy. On page four of this, attendance procedures, it's letter B. We did, we had language that explained how parents had to send in a written note of explanation. And there wasn't anything about an absent line. So we removed the written note of explanation and we set up a call line, an absent line that parents can call before eighteen, eighteen fifteen. And reminds them that there will be a system where we will send out an automated communication if a child's absent. The explanation, it really just aligns with what Dear Hill does. I'm sure Osgood does the same thing, but it's going to help our sixth grade parents as they transition in the CMS if we have the same policies. It actually also makes our main office a little bit more efficient. Letter C, home tutoring, same thing, there's language that it exists per law. It was in, not, it's district language that was absent. We didn't have a section on home tutoring. So we wanted to make sure that we described the student services policies or practices. And then lastly, on page forty-nine, we didn't have anything that really described what there is to do after school, especially as sometimes we have families thinking about moving to the district and then they go to the website and reminds us that I think they would certainly look at as the handbook. And we wanted it to be reflective of sort of the rich life that we're trying to provide.
That's great.
At school. So that's, we just wanted more accurately to describe life at CMS. It said nothing really crazy, nothing.
That's good. You don't want things crazy.
I don't want things crazy. But we also though wanted to make sure because we, you know, what we're working off is a handbook that had been the high schools when the two schools were together. We've evolved it, and one of the focuses with school council this year was to make sure that it was reflective of school, school committee policy, that we were actually, our handbook actually contained what the policies are that you guys passed.
We appreciate it.
So we updated it.
I'll turn to the committee for any questions. Mr. Carr.
No, this is, this is great. So we, at our last meeting, we spent a lot of time with your colleagues at the other schools. And I think you won't be surprised where there's a different level of parental engagement at the other schools, and I'm sure you're aware of it. So this is just something that's coming up and important to us. I'm sure we'll spend more time about it, but I think these are very good choices, I think. As you think, Drew, you're the first line of defense when you, when they come from the other schools here, so. It's something that's, you know, important. It just was a very different document and presentation.
It is, and you know, that idea, because like I say, we've evolved this now for a couple of years. But as the school council, the year before last, or nineteen twenty, we got, our work got cut in half because of COVID and the shutdown that year. We had started looking at some of the better middle schools in the state and how they present their handbook. And I think that's going to be one of our jobs as a school council next year is to sort of look at the way it presents, the way it reads. And, you know, Principal Scott's exactly right. Most people don't sit down and read it, they only refer to it when there's an issue. You know, even in that case, you still want to present it and make it user friendly, but also have it represent who we are as a school. And I'm not sure we're there yet, but that's like one of the goals for next year. So you're here.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's okay.
Yeah, well, one of the things I do like is the collaboration that you have with the elementary schools as well. We were talking about with my son, about his children in fifth grade. And he just thought that was awesome. Like, yeah, to see that, to see that in the high school as well. See that, you know, that way it really gets the fear going up there that you already have that role model or that mentor. So that's enough to be.
Thank you. Yeah, Paul Suckman, we had step update last Friday. So the fifth graders came up and seventh and eighth grade student council members and eighth grade peer leaders, one of whom is Jack, led small groups of kid, well, actually, there are groups of like eight or ten with an adult, one of the fifth grade teachers or aides. We had them sort of do a tour of the school and then came back for a question and answer period that really, I kind of stepped back and our eighth graders kind of ran that. They sat on the stage, they passed the mic between them and answered the questions. So, yeah, we're, you know, we take seriously the fact that we're a middle school. We're, you know, we're connected to the elementarys and the high schools, so we're really in the middle.
It really is.
Yeah. And, you know, it's, Dr. Salas and I both have talked about the fact that in growing up, we're both middle children. Like, we get it.
It's all about the.
Exactly.
Yes. And I would also say, like, what do you think we can do to engage more parents, especially with, like, the PSO or.
Can I?
Less work.
Can I? I'm not playing the fifth, but can we talk about that when we get to school improvement plan?
Yeah.
Because that is a big piece of what we're talking about.
We're continuing, yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Don't think this was it.
So, okay. Mr. McCullough.
Thank you, Principal Mills. Just same thing that I mentioned to Principal Scott, just, I think, collaborate with them to make sure that the disciplinary section of the handbook really leaves nothing to interpretation as best you can. I mean, as these situations arise, you'll probably discover things that leave interpretation. But if we can square that away as much as possible in advance and, you know, provide some level of consistency for building a building. Like, for example, one discrepancy I saw is in the alcohol and tobacco controlled substances section. Yours had a sort of nice preamble about like, students shall not use or consume, possess, buy, sell, or get any product containing nicotine, that tobacco, alcohol, steroid aid. That section did not appear in the high schools, and this isn't a criticism. Principal Scott was pointing out, I think, I think it's an important part of it. I think that the handbook should exhibit that. Also give thought to when you're talking about controlled substances or paraphernalia, mentioning any container that once contained, you know, whether empty or full, you know. So any empty vaping cartridges, any empty tobacco containers, you know, any empty cigarette box, anything like that. Like, right, at least it's not going to mandate disciplinary action, but it'll give us the opportunity to do that if we think that intervention will be necessary, given the student, their history and what they're, you know. I don't think about that, but definitely collaborate on that, on that portion of it to make sure that there's uniformity there. It's very important when we get to situations because, as you know, they can be very emotional situations. Important.
That's a good suggestion. Thank you.
Saint Ange.
I really like the addition of the extracurriculars that just came up the other day with friends who all of us have oldest children who are in the fifth grade and they're wondering about middle school. And I was listing some things either, but just nice for those of us who are. To the middle school, hey, this is what's available, so it's great to have it as public information. Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, just anytime, it's easy to find information. It's a good thing.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
Thank you.
One question from me, and this actually may be for Dr. Sullivan because it probably goes across the schools. The excused absence policy includes a list of things that are excused. One of them is illness with a note from an appropriate medical office. And I'm curious if that's a requirement because in this world we live in now, I don't think we want to discourage people from staying home if they're possibly contagious. And people might be worried about getting an unexcused absence, but they may not be sick enough to have to go to a doctor either. So I guess how do we manage that? Is there a process for people who are just staying home because they're ill but haven't gotten a medical note?
Well, so remember, you're, this is all about legality and providing credit or providing. And you have a number of days that someone can be absent because they're ill and not get a medical note. It's not an excused absence, but it's an absence. But in order to excuse it, that's when you go to a doctor, to get the note. It just makes it so that we wouldn't have an egregious long-term absence that would be over eight days, where we would have someone losing credit. It allows someone to go and get a doctor's note to forgive that absence from a legal standpoint.
So is that, is that, is that a, is that from a legal requirement that we need to have a doctor's note for an excused absence? Or can we have a parent note? Or do we have latitude at all?
No.
No? That's, that is the question.
And in reality, Tessie, when we put it, they don't care whether it's excused or unexcused. It's just an excuse.
Okay, but it allows.
It's not an excuse.
So essentially, it is for families and for students to allow them to potentially, from a high school point of view particularly, to have their student, to have the students still get credit for the course.
Got it.
By doing that. But from a missing school, you know, whether you're missing school and you're homesick or you're missing school and you're homesick and you get a doctor's note, from the state perspective, it makes that.
Got it.
It's all chapter seventy-six.
Exactly, and it's because of the, it's the issue. But it's the chronic absenteeism happening across the country. So that's where this law came from some years ago.
But the view is to look at it as we're helping families to be able to get that excuse as opposed to not allowing any excuse of that.
True. And we also, part of this, this policy in the law is that we want to help families if there's a problem getting your child to school, right? We're just hearing about, you know, how students are school, you know, school avoiding and all these things are happening, so.
School refusal.
Or refusal, yeah. You know, so, so we're here to help. And that's part of the laws in place also, right? So we want to keep kids who can't teach at MDC, so.
Thank you for that. Principal, no, this is, this is good work on the changes. I have no, no concerns if you want to move to the school improvement plan.
Okay. So I did just want to just share a little bit of data. They'll connect to a couple of school improvement plan goals. The first comes from, it's called the holistic student assessment. We partnered with PARE, Partnership in Education and Resilience, this year. I presented earlier in the year about this, essentially SEL survey that we had students do. They completed it third, just about the end of September and then mid-winter. I think next year, we'll do it a little later in the year. When we, it basically shows strengths and challenges along a handful of dimensions. The PARE defines different qualities or characteristics or skills, social skills. When we presented at the beginning of the year, it was the greatest challenge school-wide was around what they refer to as assertiveness, but it's sort of feeling comfortable enough to, you know, share, share your voice, empowerment. And we had worked on a lot of different initiatives, everything school-wide, like reforming student council all the way down to individual practices in the classroom to help kids develop greater assertiveness, to use PARE's term. So it's really empowerment. And a big phrase, big thread this year at CMS was developing student voice. And we saw overall that student voice decreased as a challenge for the number of kids who reported it. But the nice thing, the exciting thing that jumped about the data was that along with that, there were a number of strengths that were developed that were connected. And we saw an increase in the number of kids who reported in the survey or the survey reported that they had developed or increased, you know, the following strengths. And there were things like relationships with peers, relationships with adults, action orientation, meaning you feel like you get agency, which we talked about earlier in the year, the ability to like sort of control things or affect things around you, the ability to use critical thinking, school bonding, which really meant a lot to us, trust, perseverance and the ability to sort of reflect on, you know, your job as a student, your role, how you do school. So it was, it was nice to see some, some growth and development using this PARE assessment. We're going to continue it next year and it'll be kind of neat to start getting longitudinal data. So that was one of the, one of the pieces of data that we looked at in developing the school improvement plan. And then the other was the school council is one of our action items for this year's school improvement plan was to develop a parent survey. We, the school council and I developed it. Better than this, the, so we collected data in February. We had about eighty parents, which is only about twenty-five percent. We shared it via email a number of times and newsletter. And there's a breakdown by grade, and it was all, it was actually pretty even between the three grades, the parents that. And there's a breakdown by grade and it was all, it was actually pretty even between the three grades, the, the parents that participated, which I was, I was kind of happy about it. You know, overall I would have liked to see a higher rate of participation. But nonetheless, I feel like because of, you know, the, the fact it was even that the data might tell us something. So the first area that we looked at was family engagement. And overall eighty percent of people said that they were happy with, uh, homeschool communication, like things like emails and newsletters. Uh, the next piece of family engagement, teacher meetings. And the question was, are you satisfied or very satisfied with the number of times you meet in person with your, your kid's teachers? And as you see, most people aren't satisfied at all, only only fifteen percent. Yep. So, uh, as a follow-up question, um, uh, parents were asked, you know, the number of times that they'd like to meet in person with their child's teachers. And it averaged out to be, most people said two to three times, uh, over the course of the year. And then, uh, as far as engagement, we also would ask about their will, their parents' willingness to get involved or their interest to get involved. And one out of two parents said that they would be happy to participate in fundraising. So, um, I think, you know, the question of a family engagement, it came up. It shows that we have families that they're happy with emails and newsletters, but they want to get more, uh, involved personally, uh, you know, meeting with teachers and being involved in school. So I think some of the, the sentiments that were expressed earlier, I think are reflected in this data. School fit. This had to do with basically how much, uh, how parents think about how well their child, you know, how, um, fits in CMS. Eighty-nine percent said that CMS is preparing their child for the next academic year. Ninety-three percent said that they, their child feels a sense of belonging. Eighty-eight percent, uh, the activities match their child's interest. Eighty-six percent agreed that their child is comfortable asking for help from adult students. Overall, nine, uh, almost ninety percent said the teaching styles of teachers match their child's learning style. So when the school council, when we, we had a great meeting where we boiled down all this data and we first got the results, we kind of felt like when it came to school fit, that was a really successful piece. I mean, engagement wasn't like, it wasn't that it was unsuccessful. It was data that was telling us something. Um, that as far as what we had to do better with some things, school fit, we were really happy with that. Uh, but obviously there's still room for improvement. Uh, next area was around learning behaviors. And that, these were questions that really focused on, uh, how the individual things that kids do learn and their parents' perceptions. Kind of ninety-four percent agreed that their child is motivated to learn, uh, school curriculum. Eighty-three percent said that their child, uh, their children do find assignments and lessons motivating and engaging. Ninety-three percent said that they, kids do learn from the feedback that they receive. All really good things. Um, there's a question or a statement, my child struggles to get organized for school. We, eighty percent of parents agree with that. So it was another action item, another place where we realized we have some work to do because parents don't feel that their kids are, um, either that their kids are not, uh, that they don't possess the organizational skills, or maybe the parents could use some help in helping kids get and stay organized at home. And the school climate, um, uh, the same thing, we, we found really positive numbers. Uh, ninety-one percent said their child enjoys going to school. Uh, ninety percent values the diversity of students' backgrounds. Uh, ninety-eight percent, uh, students at CMS have respect for the staff. And ninety-four percent said the staff have respect for the students. Um, same thing, we're really, you know, overall really pleased with, um, school climate, uh, and what parents said. And then the last area was around school safety. And this was done once again in February. Um, but ninety-four percent said they don't worry about violence at CMS, bullying response. Uh, it's not difficult for kids to get help from an adult if bullied at CMS was positive. And ninety-two percent said that their child feels safe at CMS. Once again, we did this in February with, you know, the events in the world over the last month or two. I would hazard a guess that data might look different, but, um, in late, late February, early March, people felt, that's how they felt. So. So as school council, we talked about what are the next steps? Number one, and probably most important, is create more opportunities for parent-teacher connection. Support student development and organizational skills. And then we thought, you know what, even though it was positive, it, it can only help to make sure that kids and parents have a really, a much better, you know, an improved understanding of bullying and safety protocols overall. It's just going to leave, it, it turned out to sort of be forward-thinking because I think now, um, that's really helpful. So, so that was the data that we got out of the student survey and what we did with it as a school council. I'll stop to plug too. I had a great school council, uh, parents Barbara Steppen, uh, Catherine Williams and Sarah Williams were fantastic. And teachers Gabby Lima, uh, Kathy Sanchez and, uh, Mark Eagles were the three faculty members. And they did, we had great meetings. Um, we were sad, actually kind of sad at the end of the year because, uh, somebody has to give up a seat so that we can get a rotation with parents because we've worked, uh, closely now for a couple of years. So that's, uh, that's where we are with, uh, um, the data that we had looked at. So can we switch over? Do you mind, Patrick? We'll switch over to, um, the school improvement plan.
Sure.
Let's do, so, uh, a lot of this, the first few pages are really just template, um, you know, set by sharing. You know, the mission and vision of the school, uh, as well as the MCAS data, which is actually twenty-one. So I wanted to get right into the goals. This was the same MCAS data that I presented in the fall with this year's school improvement plan. Obviously, we haven't had updated, we won't have updated until later in the summer. So, um, the first, uh, uh, school improvement plan goal, uh, does so much come out of the data, but it really comes out of the work we've been doing over the first couple of years, and especially coming out of the pandemic. And it's really focused on, you know, I, I would describe it as we're, we're trying to erect the scaffold and that we need to support all our kids. I think Dear Hill does a, in, in Oscar, but I, I use Dear Hill because our kids transition in from there. They do a really nice job. We have a reading specialist, math interventionist, they use screening, uh, to help identify kids that struggle. And kids get support that they need there. Um, as I came in, uh, nineteen twenty, we didn't have math or reading support. So our kids would, you know, go into the general ed classes and data, as I looked at the data, they, they would struggle. A certain percentage of kids, especially the kids that received that support in Dear Hill, they struggled. And a high percentage by seventh or eighth grade, they were being evaluated and being put on IEPs. In other words, they weren't addressing their needs any other way. And, um, they had demonstrated, uh, you know, lack of progress. So, uh, at that point, if you remember a year and a half ago, we started talking about we have to get the people in to build those sort of similar scaffolds at, um, at CMS. So that, that's background. So the first goal really is that CMS will continue to implement, implement a multi-tiered system of support. And I go on to define it. It's really, it's evidence-based systematic, systemic practices that, you know, are set up to respond to students' academic or emotional behavioral needs. The action plan would be to support the reading specialist in identifying kids who in need of intervention, using the, you know, implement the appropriate intervention, the progress monitor while communicating with families. To the, you know, the, the largest of the school committee, we were able to add a math interventionist going into next year. And that they would have the same sort of action plan, that their, their job is to help identify, uh, students in need of intervention, implement the intervention and then progress monitor while communicating with parents. I do have to say as an aside, um, really happy to announce we, uh, just hired our math interventionist. We're really excited. Um, um, with Dr. Sullivan and Dr. Scollins' help. Um, and I think she's going to be a great addition to the faculty.
Great.
Um, the next bullet under action, analyze diagnostic screening data, which is already ready now and use it to inform, uh, how we support kids. Uh, make sure we provide professional development and strategies to improve reading comp across all, uh, content areas. When you talk about tiered support, tier one, the bottom of the triangle is what do we do for all kids? And one of the things I think which can be really important is to work on literacy strategies for all kids. So they become better readers and then, uh, with those strategies, it unlocks the social studies, the science curriculum, the, you know, the foreign language. It's the, the non-ELA, it's informational text reading that I would like to see our kids improve on. And it's what the data says within reading. That's one of the places that they struggle, uh, across the school. And then lastly, develop the MTSS capacity and practices to support all students. Specifically that would, one of, one of the first goals there, the MTSS team is talk about, uh, in a tier one way, tier one and probably a tier two, how do we support kids with organizational skills? Uh, you know, um, especially coming out of the pandemic, I think a lot of kids maybe develop bad habits, but that'll be one of the first goals is, um, you know, how do we help all kids develop those strategies and communicate at home? Second goal is around SEL. And it's to implement four strategies, um, focusing on promoting equitable opportunities for and social, um, social emotional wellness of all students. We're going to use Pear data again. We'll see where the kids are, especially with a new grade in and one grade gone. See what the, what their needs are and then really focus like we did this year, um, uh, on their, um, social emotional development. Um, the last piece, the last action bullet really is around inclusiveness, which is a piece to me, it's one in the same as, as a social emotional uh, development. But, uh, we've done a lot as a school this year around inclusivity with, um, with inclusivity, a, a student inclusivity group. Uh, the faculty is committed and, you know, we've done, we had a lot of great events, but at times we sometimes felt like it was a little reactive. And one of those we, our goals for next year is to, um, look for, like explore and, and find a program such as like No Place For Hate or something like that, that we could try so that we could start the year with, um, uh, a, 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 almost an agenda for the year. What, what do we want to do and when, as opposed to reacting to unfortunate events or events that happen in the world or in the school? So, um, that would be one of the four strategies that we're looking at. Uh, but like I said, the other three are based on the SEL data, the pear data, like I showed you earlier. And then number four, uh, I'm sorry, number three, last comment, uh, smart goal three is around parents. And three new methods for developing effective communication, engagement partnerships. And first bullet, develop opportunities for parents and teachers to meet, to discuss and support continued student growth. We've talked a lot about parent conferences. Um, if, can, I'm not sure if we'll have them contractually or not. If we do, that's gonna, that's really what our parents are looking for, our parent conferences. If we don't get them or maybe on top of parent conferences, we also talked about things like grade level breakfasts. So, you know, a certain day, uh, of the year, we could have grade six parent breakfast and the grade six teachers would be here, parents would be invited to come in, but it's, it's a chance to sort of just get to know, to have a little FaceTime with, um, uh, for parents with their children's teachers. Um, we're still working on more fundraising with PSO, especially one big event. I, I feel like we're still missing that, uh, to help fund the PSO. And then lastly, we're going to continue the parent survey that we developed this year, uh, net for next year. So we'll drive into the school, uh, school improvement plan. So those are, those are the three parts of the school improvement plan.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Uh, comments from the member, Mr. Carr.
This is great. Um, what is the current contractual, you mentioned contractual obligation on here? I've just said it.
Uh, I think there was some talk in collective bargaining around bringing like, uh, creating a parent conference.
Okay.
And we, we do have an executive session item, uh,
On that.
Already, so.
Okay, great. This is excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and regardless, I, we, we met on, uh, May twenty-seventh, our early release as, as a faculty. And that's one of the things we brainstormed is how do we, how do we get more parents in here? How do we spend more time face-to-face? Faculty, um, like I've shared that data, they understand that, you know, parents, uh, trust them and respect them. They just want to find opportunities to meet with them and get to know them. So we brainstormed different things like the breakfasts. But, uh, yeah, thank you.
True.
Yeah, good.
Thank you.
Mr. Kenny.
Yeah, well, I would say that parents are very happy with high school. That's kind of like the middle of high school. I, I, I would say that. I was definitely, people have told me the improvement is a hundred percent. And to be honest with you, the last survey that we did prior to you being here was fifty percent that people were happy with the school. I mean, Patrick, you were there for that.
Yeah, it was definitely the, um, the, the support we received to move to a independent middle school made a difference. As you would imagine it would, but it made some great.
Yeah, and it's night and day. I mean, that's, that was, that was the, the statistics we had four years ago. And it screamed parents weren't happy. And, and, and I can only tell you that in my experience with talking to parents is they are extremely happy with school.
But to process that, we're not done.
No, I, yeah, no, I know. I, I just want you to know that that's the, that's the, the community outreach is. And, and it's, and I'm glad you touched on the parent-teacher conference because that is one huge issue that I've heard from parents. We'll bring it up. But thank you. I really appreciate, um, all the information. Thanks for doing it for the kids.
Thank you.
Mr. Collins. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Mills. Uh, I usually take this opportunity every year just to recognize you for having created a, a really successful school out of nothing essentially. And, uh, I credit, um, Dr. Sullivan and Dr. Scollins for having foresight and you for executing it so well. And, uh, it's, it's very clear what a great job he did and those survey results speak for themselves. And, um, I think that, uh, that's true for frankly, all our building principals. I think we have an amazing Voltron, if you will, of, uh, of, uh, you know, to get it by your power of the bond, which is an unstoppable force of building leaders. And, uh, uh, we're really fortunate, you know, and, and, and it goes, I didn't say Principal, poor Principal Scott, you know, he, he, he's, he's, you do an excellent job too, and everyone of them do. But, uh, I do usually take this opportunity to recognize you for that because you've essentially done school. I mean, you know, we, we didn't have that separate entity, um, you know, just, you know, over three years ago. So it's like, you know, it's amazing. It's remarkable the work you've done and you should be credited that publicly as an educator. It, it speaks volumes to your skill and your abilities at this level. It's a very difficult, I think, from a pedagogical and social emotional perspective, um, developmental age group to work with. And you are just a master of it and, uh, you should be commended for it, Mr. Professor Mills. So.
Appreciate that thinking.
Yeah, um.
And faculty deserves a lot of credit.
What's that?
The faculty really deserve a lot of credit. They're the ones the parents are sort of beating down the doors to see because they, because they, they really do love the teachers.
For sure. But there's, you know, trickle-down effect there. And, and, you know, I mean, you know, sometimes, you know, I mean, you, you get burdened with, and sadly with a lot of the complaints, but you are also, you know, um, you know, a lot of success trickles down from the, um, community, the sense of community and the culture that you promote that you're building. So thank you. And I, you know, certainly not doing any dismerch, or saying anything to dismerch any, you know, qualifications or contributions to faculty. But I'm really focusing on you as a building leader and, and how lucky we are to have you, Principal Scott, Principal Farrell, Principal Sullivan.
On the sound.
Um, I like the goals. I'm looking at the three goals. I'm curious. And I understand there's contractual, like negotiating obligations that are going to have to happen before parent conferences can happen. But, um, I feel like when I look at all of them together, it makes sense to use a parent-student-teacher conference model, which when I was a middle school teacher, we used and it was such a beautiful thing. As kids are learning, what does organization look like? What does studying look like? What is my own, you know, taking ownership? But, you know, it's, it's great for parents and teachers to check in, but the student is the one who's the student.
Yep.
Um, and I was thinking something, and maybe you're already have that in mind, but I just found that when I was a middle school teacher, it was such a productive conversation and it allowed kids to take ownership and literally be a part of the conversation. So as you're moving through.
That's a great suggestion.
No, I love that.
That's all. That's great.
Um, on my end, I, uh, I have nothing to add on the, uh, on the, on the goals and the plan. I think the plan looks great. Uh, I want to commend you on the data. And I also don't want it to go without, I was, uh, Principal Scott, you're still here. Your data was tremendous as well. Uh, I saw that those improvement numbers were, were, were wonderful. We got sidetracked a little bit, but I want to make sure that was recognized. It's, that's, that's, that's fantastic news. Uh, the fact that our kids are loving coming to school, that speaks volumes. I don't know that my schools would have scored as highly, uh, when I was, I mean, I'm painting this picture of a horrible elementary school. It was great, great school, but, um, you know, ninety-one percent liking coming to school, that's incredible. So, uh, so excellent work. So, um, with that, unless there's any community comments or any other comments to the committee, what I would do here is again, this is a, a, a committee agenda action item, so I, I entertain a motion. And once again, as we did with the last one, I will read a proposed motion that does not have to take this. It does not have to take this motion or take this form, but, uh, I would propose, and I would entertain a motion proposed as follows. Uh, resolve that the handbook and school improvement plan for the Coasette Middle School is hereby approved as presented to the Coasette School Committee. So moved.
Second.
We'll give the, um, the St. Orange as the rating motion, uh, Mr. Collin as seconding it. Um, and we'll just go ahead and do a roll call, Mr. Carr.
Aye.
Mr. Kennedy.
Aye.
Mr. Collin.
Aye.
And Mr. Dial, aye, with five ayes, no nays. Uh, the handbook and school improvement plan are approved as presented and Dr. Sullivan and Principal Mills, please implement as reported.
Absolutely. Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Big, big thank you to, to Principal Mills and to Principal Scott and Principal Mills and for all your work.
Thank you. Our next agenda item goes to Dr. Leslie Scollins. We have, uh, some amendments that were foreshadowed, I think, at our last meeting from the amendment policy at Deer Hill and Joseph Oswood.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Want to apologize, we have a couple bulbs that flew, that's why I was wondering why it was sort of shadowy in the back. Didn't know until it got dark. Actually, actually, okay, it's, it shows up better.
Um, so we discussed this at our last meeting. Uh, we hadn't really flushed out all the language, so, uh, you saw this in both the middle and high school. It's the same exact language we're trying to really make sure our handbooks are aligned. So this is the same, uh, language that will go into the Oswood and the Deer Hill handbooks. We give their pages that they would go on. Um, and then, I guess, just the lines so that all the schools have the same language based on the school committee policy and the law.
Great. All right, uh, any questions from the committee, I'll just do open floor. No questions? All right, uh, once again, this is an action item, so I'll entertain a motion. Uh, again, I'll propose a resolution, um, resolve that the amendments to the Deer Hill School and Joseph Oswood School handbooks are hereby approved as presented to the Coasette School Committee. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by, uh, Mr. Collin, motion seconded by Mr. St. Orange. Um, we'll just do, uh, a, a non-roll call vote, just all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the motion carries unanimously, uh, five oh. Dr. Sullivan, Dr. Scott, please implement the amendments as presented.
Good, thank you very much.
All right. Next agenda block is our budget resources and governance. And we'll turn it over to Mrs. Susan Owen in just a moment for the budget finance report. But before I do that, just for the committee and people who are watching, this block is, has a number of standing agenda items. Mr. Kennedy, one, you know, due to your heart. Uh, one element I wanted to emphasize for the community and the structure of this agenda is that the school itself is a very complex organization. Not only does it have what we just heard about with academic learning and, and getting the product of education of our students and caregiving of our students, but it also is in very real sense, a building maintenance facility. We have, you know, several buildings to maintain, we have several yards to the landscape. Um, we also serve as a transportation function. We, we serve as a transportation medium for about a thousand students. Um, we also serve food, again, to about over a thousand people every single day. That's the size, that's bigger than many restaurants. Um, so these activities are here, they will be standing agenda items, so in the event there are items to report on them, we can have them, but also just to highlight the complexity of this, this organization. Um, so with that as an intro, uh, Ms. Owen, um, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So this is the, um, budget report for the month, closing month of May, um, one more month ago. It, it, I'll just give you the brief update, so the school budget, um, has been expended at eighty, eighty-five percent, um, through the school budget. And we are actually ninety-two percent through the school year, so we're, we're in a good place. Um, all right, we should be, we have uncovered supplies and materials and purchase orders in about seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Remaining balance available is about three point one million. Um, as of yesterday, we have, we have run our last, um, auto pay so that, um, the remaining balance is much less than that because our, our last payroll was the lump sum payroll. Um, and it was about two point four mil, two point four million, so, um, it ain't a pretty good push-up of the three point one. Um, but that will be in our next, in our next month. Spent tuitions, um, throughout the whole year, we've been holding negative. Um, I think we're up to like five hundred, minus five hundred and forty thousand dollars, um, due to the, the, um, fifth payment circuit breaker. Um, did we see that we talked about it in the last budget update? Um, the extra li, extraordinary relief came in for two hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars, um, which lowered our shortfall in our spent tuitions. It went from five, like five forty to, um, uh, minus three hundred and thirty-five thousand. Um, not out of the norm to be in, in the red, the spent tuitions, that, that's always unanticipated expenses that come through. Um, students move into the district, students move out, um, outplaced. So we're comfortable and closely monitoring. Um, but like I said, after, after running most of our payrolls yesterday, we're in a pretty good place. And then we have the individual school budget here. Um, as you can see, it lists all the schools and they're eighty-two percent, eighty-one point seven five, seven, seven point seven six, and eighty-three point two one. Um, again, um, we are closely watching our budgets. Um, we're ninety-five percent through the year and we're still running in the eighties, which is, um, a good sign, no worries. Let me talk about circuit breaker a little bit, um, which I just mentioned. So back by twenty-two, we received a fifth payment from circuit breaker due to extraordinary relief, um, which is a very detailed process, um, the spent department, you know, gets kudos for, um, they have lots and lots of filing, lots of paperwork and details to, to support that. In order to qualify for extraordinary relief, the district must demonstrate that the costs that we claimed on circuit breaker in the current fiscal year exceed the cost claimed under the program the previous year by twenty-five percent. Um, our district did qualify, which again shows why our tuitions are, um, in the deficit, unplanned, anticipated. So the two hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars, we have to spend that this year. We have already spent it, so the deficit go down, um, and hopefully next year we can do it again.
Sorry to interrupt, can you put folks watching, you know, can you explain a little further what circuit break means?
Sure, so circuit breaker is, I, I'm not sure what they call it, circuit breaker, I've always wondered that. Um, but what it is, is it's a reimbursement the state gives us for special education tuition. Um, there's a foundation amount that they, they, they take the total, um, tuition amount, say a hundred thousand dollars. There's a foundation amount, maybe forty-five thousand dollars, they, they subtract off that hundred thousand. And then they give you, um, currently seventy-five percent of the remaining. They, they return it, they reimburse you, most tuition from the state. Um, and that happens every year.
A good tool to have in the toolbox. Great, thank you.
Capital Outlay, um, most of our projects are complete or in process. Idea Hill, uh, idea Hill, sorry, middle high school HVAC system, um, they're still working on rebuilding that. Um, they're revamping the specifications, obviously, price of things have changed, um, so I'm not quite sure when that'd be going on. Probably, my guess is this summer or in the fall. The Oskar Sprinklehead, which we talked about earlier, has, has been completed. Um, turf and track. So, um, we have a kickoff meeting for the track on Friday, um, to talk about the process and the timeline for the turf and the track. Um, the wood shop, dust plant is completed, the door fobs are completed, um, science lab, exciting, it's what's going to be done over the summer. Power technology, everything's been ordered and will be, um, implemented over the summer. Lots of projects happening over the summer. Food services, revamping their whole, whole kitchen upstairs, we're expanding to have a snack plate room. Um, and it will streamline the process in, in the lines of the students. Um, the, um, athletics department will be working on a fitness center, so that's happening over the summer. Um, there's lots of big projects happening over the summer, press box, they started finally working on that, they'll waiting till school settles. And then we, their next on here, sorry, is the next year's capital outlay. Um, so you can see the projects that we're hoping the school bus lease, um, is a, if, is a given. The middle school high school aging will happen over the summer, um, the furniture replacement will happen over the summer. Um, replacement of ancient pro books, I believe, um, technology is already working on. Deer Hill retirement of all the classrooms will happen over the summer. The families will be upgraded or replaced over the summer, the locker mechanisms for middle school. And then the health, um, the middle school health room, um, have the AC heater split and they'll be creating a separate entrance to the bathroom.
Just in the school bus category, I believe I saw last night the board's selectmen voted to approve the procurement of the, um, test for the electric school bus. They voted to approve us.
Great. You and I are going to, we're not driving on the class.
Good. I'll do it with you.
We know, we know very well, um, summary of our electric again, um, went behind, so it's the end of, end of April. And it, it just shows your comparisons from last year and this year at this time of the year, um, uses itself this year, not surprised. First full school year, I think we've had.
Yeah.
Gas, very similar, um, costs are up, not by much. But just to follow along, you know, it's good to compare from year to year. And then we have our grants, which right now we're in the spend down mode, so our, our ESSA grant, um, as of today, has about a hundred thousand dollars in it, which will be carried into next year because we have, um, it was a two-year grant, remember? So, the, our usage for this year is complete and the rest of the hundred thousand dollar funding will be rolled over to next year. Most of these grants are in stable balance currently, um, because this last per payroll has gone through, um, for the month of June. So you, you'll see like the spit, idea grant, the two forty grant, the fifty-nine thousand dollars, I think it's about four thousand dollars left. Um, title one, I think is probably four thousand. The channel five, I believe, is just about gone, Metco, um, is spent. And then the American Rescue for Girl Childhood in Special Education, um, those have also been expended. Revolving funds, um, again, um, so we're looking at some of the, some of the balances of school athletic. Um, the balance is, is two hundred and forty-eight thousand after we paid all of our athletic coaches for the last, um, this last payroll, they had two hundred and forty-eight, it's down to about a hundred thousand dollars. So, um, it's, it's holding its own to the, it's in a much better financial spot. Kindergarten as well, um, that one's down to about a hundred and ten. Transportation is down to like seventy-five as of this morning. Um, I know these numbers, you know, are showing something different, but one month, month later. And then the school lunch, um, the three sixty-seven, she's, she's revamping that whole, um, kitchen upstairs. And then we're looking into purchasing some equipment for the elementary schools to upgrade them as well. Um, so that money will definitely, uh, be reduced.
Can I ask that lunch question?
Sure.
Um, obviously lunches have been subsidized by the federal government for the past two years, is that, do we know if that's going to continue?
No.
It's not, no.
Which is also why there's a higher balance, that's what I was getting. So we've, we've got a hundred percent reimbursement on everything.
Right.
Um, next year, um,
Does it carry out this summer or is it over?
I think it's over June thirtieth.
June thirtieth, okay.
Matter of fact, I know.
I love you, um, so yes. No more, no more free lunch for anyone.
No more free lunch.
No more free lunch for everyone or free breakfast. Um, I do believe, except for the, the, the plan is that we're going to offer breakfast at the elementary schools in starting the fall. Um, so they're working on a plan for that. We already offer it here at the middle high school. And then, like I said, athletic revolving, lots of things happening, um, field lights, fitness center, middle school, cafeteria, putting in a whole new serving line, new snack room, transportation, we did add the salt finder, um, we rolled that out to parents in the last week. We have about thirty people that have enrolled already.
Is it live?
It's live, there with a beam.
Yeah, so good to have it to pause you apart. Um, so great, thank you.
So if you want to sign up, you can follow, follow your GPS on the bus, see where they are. It's a great program, um, for the parents that are on the scene with their children up. So just a conclusion, you know, we're coming to the end of the fiscal year. Um, as I said, these numbers are reflective through the end of May. Um, yesterday was a big, um, turning point for us for last payroll coming through. Um, we still have open purchase orders that we're going through, some of them can be liquidated and closed out. Um, anything that, that hasn't been delivered, um, that was ordered back in September until November that hasn't been delivered, that we'll just close those out and wait for them to come in and pay them out of following this budget.
Can we, oh, we can go around? Yeah, I was gonna say, Ms. Owen, is that, conclude your report?
Um, yes.
All right.
No concerns.
Now to the, to the main, Mr. Carr, any questions?
Do you, do you find a lot of cases where people who are delinquent like that, you order something and it takes a while here and you do, you may or may not get it? Is that a big category?
This year it is.
This year?
Just because it's not supplied.
Supply chain, yeah.
Um, not usually, usually turnaround's pretty quick.
Yeah.
No, at the end of, at the end of, um, every school year, we do have some purchase orders that we just liquidate. One, because the order didn't come through, it's no, it's no longer needed. Or it got, the invoice came in, we received product, but they didn't pay against the purchase order. Um, so, so the invoice has been paid, but the purchase order didn't reflect it. So we, it closes, we close them out and it frees up, um, more funding. So that's kind of, you know, we're at the stage right, right now, we're calling members, we're calling staff, they have open POs. Um, some of the POs open right now with some, um, course reimbursements.
Oh.
Um, so we hold a placeholder for them with PO until we can turn in the paperwork.
Any habitual vendors not cooperating or, you know, they're pretty good?
No, no, they're all pretty, they're all pretty good, other than, you understand, the supply and demand right now is, is, there's a way.
Supply chain is slow.
It is.
As you know.
Oh, sure.
It's very slow. Um, that's really the only holdup. Um, the, the only other thing I'd like to add is we did have a meeting with the finance subcommittee and happy to say that our, and our landscaping has.
Looking good, much better.
Yeah, we got the broad, the process, um, we purchased the lawn hoes, the weed blowers, the weed whackers, um, last weekend. They were out here at the school doing all the courtyard.
Also, Chris Kennedy, uh, thank you to Kennedy Gardens, did the courtyard, did some landscaping here, uh, we're at the middle high school. And then also, uh, Deer Hill did some extensive work that, um, for those of you who follow, uh, Principal Sullivan on Twitter, she tweeted about that. Thank you, Chris Kennedy, and Kennedy's.
But yes, that, that's, it's nice to see, it's nice to see them. I actually, when I was sitting in there, I saw them, a couple custodian helped them take stuff up in the courtyard.
Mr. Fisher was telling me about plans for way to the side too.
Yes.
The other side, so.
Yep, so they're going to do the front of the building, they were in court yards this past weekend and now they're going to do the fronts and up against the buildings, um, because they still need some weeding and hopefully we can get some mulch and clean up and be a little better.
Mr. Carr, any, um, terrific.
Thank you, Kenny.
Thank you, uh, could we pull up the revolving accounts for a minute? Yeah, I was just wondering, like, I want, you know, and I want to ask some of the committee members. Um, you, do you think, I mean, we can put at some point, put this on the agenda to kind of look at some of these revolving accounts? Because it's like, um, you know, we do have needs to buy things that we don't have. So we do have like, say, thirty-three thousand in our school committee gifts. Yeah, there's just one thing there, I mean, we got, if, if, by a quick math, we got a couple million, we got over a million dollars here in revolving accounts that, you know, I would be honest with you, I've been here for four years and none of them moved. And.
Mr. Kennedy, that's a, that's a, that's a good suggestion, I'll, um, I think we should put that on, on, on future, enough.
Okay, great, that's all, thanks.
Mr. Collin.
So, and, uh, you had the turf project, Marcus, in pro, in process or in progress? Um, last I knew, we were just doing track and then we get to the turf, it's surprised or something, some development or change there, there's been changes, I'm unaware of.
Correct. Um, in process. More, you know, meant that we went out to bid, um, we wanted to bid, so it, we're at least, we at least made some starting aid.
Okay, so there's no change in circumstances.
There's no change of circumstances.
I think, um, Mr. McCollum makes a good point, though. I think, Mr. McCollum makes a good point, though, to clarify, for anybody who might be watching today, tonight, who wasn't here last time. Because of the supply chain, we have determined that we're going to forge forward with the track, which we feel pretty confident will be done by the start of the year. Enough, enough to make sure that we'll do it, because we don't think it's going to impact sports in the fall. But we do believe that we're, we're not going to have the materials, certainly wouldn't have the materials for the, for the turf, that is, in time to not impede the, the fall sports, so we're going to hold off on the turf.
Correct.
Until the following year. It's still safe, it's still in a, you know, in a position where.
It's in a holding pattern right now.
It's in a holding pattern, but the supply chain is just not allowing us to get it done. Would be basically canceling our, our home season and doing it in various places.
Correct, unfortunate, but.
Interesting. Lastly, the commissioner of education notified all the districts that there's an enormous amount of unclaimed desert funds. And he was calling upon the districts to apply for and brand, or brand the money to use it, but wondering if you have inquired or if you could inquire as to whether or not anything else is left unclaimed? There's some deadline by which it remains unclaimed, and we might be able to get our hands on it, double that, get some of that money to better our district.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, what was this referred to?
That's just one, two, and three, there's a.
It's a community, it's a county, county?
No, that's, that's where is the federal grant for the relief for the co-urgency secondary, elementary secondary school relief fund.
We've spent all of ours. Leftover money that's.
We have spent all, our S A one is closed, our S A two is closed, our S A three, we have a hundred and eighty thousand for next year. So we're all spoken, it's earmarked, but yes, I can reach out and see if there are unclaimed funds.
Yeah, there, there are unclaimed, there are a lot of.
There's a lot of unclaimed money, I just don't know if we, if there's some way, like, if they eventually, I mean, that money's just not going to sit there, right? If they want, it's already been earmarked for education. If they say, look, by a certain date, yeah, we're going to open it back up, say, well, we're first, we want to be first in line, or we want to, you know, get front row seats to that show. And. Something, I mean, you know, it's like, you know, it's, it's, it doesn't matter if it's closed, S A one, it doesn't matter to see what, whatever it is, if we could, you know, whatever. I'm sure there's a good answer for it, but maybe not, you never know.
I'm going to email tomorrow, actually, because they can always, you know, they could say no at this point because it's still early on, but.
Sure.
We can ask.
Keep an eye on that, because it was, it was a ton.
A lot of it.
Absurd.
The only other thing that I, I didn't mention is I know Athletic Director Tandi is working on, I don't know if it's boosters, but donations, and he's pretty confident that, this is, this is new, this week, that we, we will have the funding to put in that new school board that Capitol denied, so.
I would vote that we're not going to fix that school board until we fix the girls' school. Because the girls' softball team doesn't work with the boys' baseball team.
No good deed goes unpunished, but that's a fight for another night, probably.
Yeah, we're not going to be a school until they all work. I'll tell you that, no football team is going to supersede the girls' team. It happened to Milton, they got a picture of the boys' baseball team, this baseball field, right in the picture, like, mint. Girls' softball fields, weeds everywhere. I just don't want that to happen.
So, so, thank you, Ms. Owen, for that, for that update, actually, if you would not mind passing on that concern to Mr. Tandi.
I would. But we want to do all this.
What, we want to ensure it's equitable, and we want to make sure that we, we've thought about how to do that, so.
Maybe start with the girls.
Start with the girls? Ms. McCall, any other further, further comments, questions? Ms. Saint Ange?
No.
All right, and, and nothing from me except for a thank you, Ms. Owen, appreciate your budget finance. This is the point of the agenda where we start rapidly picking up quick on pace. So moving forward, buildings, school properties, some of the, what we talked about here with the end of that agenda item, but there's nothing to date. Transportation, I don't believe there's any updates there from, that have not already been discussed. Food service, Mr. Kenny, I just want to point out that is an agenda item that we can fill in during the, during the time period, if we have agenda items to put in there. I don't believe we do now. Report from the school facilities committee, this is the kind of new building committee. Mr. McClellan, I believe you are, are representative to the school facilities committee.
Meeting next Tuesday.
Meeting next Tuesday. Any action items or needs from the school committee?
No.
Excellent. And then the last item, report for budget and resources subcommittee, is impossible because that has not yet been created, so that is a deleted agenda item. So that includes, that concludes item F. Item G, any reports from our, this is our community relations and communication section, and this is where, for this meeting, we will do any subcommittee or liaison reports. And I will go around, Mr. Carr, I don't believe you've joined any committees yet because you're new to the school committee. So I'll start with Mr. Kearney, do you have anything from our?
Yeah, I, I would just say that some of the things that we need to talk about pretty soon is being liaisons to the middle school and the high school and the, for the student councils. School council, school council, so we have to kind of assign.
That, that's, that's on, that is on, that's actually the next, next agenda item.
Oh, it is, wow.
So, but, but given the hour may, may, but, yes, that is on, on the, on the agenda.
Thank you.
Ms. McCall, any committee, subcommittee updates?
Superintendent eval, we are required to provide the summative evaluation superintendent years end. I requested this back when I had security clearance, and I received only one response. So please get that to me so that I can create a comprehensive collaborative summative evaluation of our superintendent, who works hard all year round and deserves one.
Fair point, we will take your gentle nudging. Ms. Saint Ange, any, something? So moving on to the agenda H, which is school committee governance. I was going to propose that we discuss at this meeting the school committee's subcommittee constitution and assignments for next year, as well as the liaison assignments, but right now I'll fill out the, the committee given the late hour if we want to push this to a future agenda item, and then also include the existing assignments and committee structures in the materials so that they are available, be viewed, and thought about in advance. And also I will have a proposal on restructuring some of the subcommittees, which I can also include for the, for the July meeting. If I hear no objection to that, then we will table these agenda items.
I'll make a motion of that effect.
I'll second it, third it.
Okay. So we have a motion to table agenda items, it is seconded by Ms. Saint Ange.
Aye.
All opposed? None, so that motion carries, these, these agenda items are effectively tabled. There are no topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair.
No, we have, there is, there is a very short gift, which I can share if you want.
Please.
Okay, I'll share that, and you want to introduce them?
Sure. So we received a gift from, it was, it was for the Brian Bilton Scholarship, which is the swim, the, the swim club, or swim group.
Yep.
You want to say. Fifty dollars from Janet and Frank Costa, and a hundred and fifty dollars from Helen and Tom Daley for a total of two hundred dollars. And it was donated for the Brian Bilton Scholarship, which is maintained here at the school. Currently, there's nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-six cents in that account, and these checks will bring the total up to one thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. And it goes towards student home twenty.
Yeah, it's, this is senior awards for our seniors, and just want to be, just want to mention, we're very thankful to Janet, Frank Costa, and Helen, Tom Daley for this generous donation to keep this important scholarship going.
Any committee comments, open forum?
Motion accepted.
I'll entertain a motion to accept. Second, Mr. Carr, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, a motion unanimously carries, thank you very much. Ms., Ms. Daly and Ms. Mrs. Costa, for your generous contribution to the Brian K. Bilton Scholarship.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For that, that concludes the topics not reasonably anticipated, we do have some minutes to approve. The minutes were included, the materials had, people had time to review the minutes. If you had time to review the minutes, what I might do is entertain a motion to approve, unless there are any comments, but first I'll open the floor. Any comments to the minutes, Mr. Carr, none of these minutes have included sessions in which you're attended, so. One and a half.
Four, two, I missed it.
Two nades in there, I mean, it's just the last of them. The only other meeting you did too.
So, in that case, we'll break that up into two resolutions. The first resolution I would entertain is a, a resolution resolving that the minutes from my March second, twenty twenty-two meeting, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting, March thirtieth, twenty twenty-two meeting, and April thirteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Quipacet School Committee are hereby approved as presented to the Quipacet School Committee. So motion is made by Mr. McCollum, do I have a second? Second by Ms. Saint Ange, all in favor? Mr. Carr, aye. One abstention, no nays, the minutes are approved, a vote of four with one abstention. I'll next entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the June eighth meeting, that the minutes of the June eighth meeting are hereby approved as presented to the Quipacet School Committee. Motion is made by Mr. Carr, motion seconded by Chair McCollum, it's like a hat.
A lot of voice in that chair now.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? The motion unanimously carries, the minutes are there, hereby approved. So we have five sets of minutes approved, we'll now move into our next agenda item. For the people at home, we are going into executive session for what is known as reason number three, which is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, and we're going to entertain a motion to that effect.
Mr. Duh, might I, or Mr. Chairperson, might I do add reason number four, which is the discussion of deployment, security, personnel, measures of strategy there, too. I have one brief point that I want to discuss, so I want to mention that in open session.
So, yes, we'll, and we will also have to move for reason number four, which is matters of security. We will come back into open session, but we will just do it to adjourn, so you will miss nothing if you log off now. With that, I will entertain a motion to move into executive session, so motion is made by Mr. McCollum.
Second.
So the motion is seconded by Ms. Saint Ange, all in favor? Mr. Carr.
Aye.
Ms. Kearney.
Aye.
Mr. McCollum.
Aye.
Ms. Saint Ange.
Aye.
And Mr. Dyle, aye, we will now move into executive session. So thank you very much, I think we will turn off.
Yeah, we, we'll just come back in person.
Yes, we'll just come back in person, turn off our machines. Thank you very much, everyone in public.